Wake up everybody, no more sleeping in bed. No more back thinking, time for thinking ahead. The world has changed so very much from what it used to be. There's so much hatred, war and poverty. Wake up all the teachers, time to teach a new way. Maybe then they'll listen to what you have to say. They're the ones who's coming up and the world is in their hands. When you teach the children to jump the very best can. The world won't get no better if we just let it be. The world won't get no better. We gotta change it now, just you and me.
Will you come to order? All right, we'll start with an opening prayer and collective allegiance. All the opening prayer. Bucky, would you lead the collective allegiance this meeting?
Lead, Rob. Heavenly Father, we just come this morning to do the people's business. We just thank you for this county and all those gathered here. We pray for wisdom and sound thinking this morning as we go through this meeting. Just thank you for this beautiful weather this morning. And this nation that you have given us and the blessings upon us. We pray and we thank you in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to lead the agenda?
I do have one addition under discussion and I'm not sure how to put it in there. The Department of Building Regulations and Licensing in Albuquerque is now asking builders for floodplain approval. And there's a form that we just had to discuss. I guess that's the best way.
Just put under discussions F.
Certainly, are you free to discuss under commission reports this morning?
Other than that, I don't have any additions or corrections. Oh, wait, maybe I do. It's semantics, we'll talk about when I get to that discussion or the action.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion and second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of minutes from the August 8 meeting.
Those were emailed out several weeks ago and there's a copy in here.
I don't have any approval, I mean corrections. So I need to approve unless there's some corrections for them.
No, second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the August 8 meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's public comment period. During this portion, the public can speak on any issue they would like. Try to hold it to two or three minutes if anyone would like to discuss. We'll open it to the public. Anybody have any comments?
My name is Carolyn Nelson. I'm from the Alma area, allotment owners down there. My topic is the petition that's out. And I called a couple people last night, one a neighbor and out there. And they said, I asked them about it and they said, we like, we signed it. And I said, what do you think about the part that says wolves should be contained in wilderness? And they said, we didn't like that, but we signed it because this is a start. And absolutely, Laura Sneberger messaged me and said, tell you guys, thank you for the effort. Thank you that you're trying to do something. Called my son, I said, what do you think? Should I go to this because it's really not fun? Should I come up here and be a pain in the tush? And he says, Mom, in the future, this could be a big problem. This is a Band-Aid right now, but this could be a big problem. In the Hila wilderness, there are no ranchers. We have four or five ranchers in wilderness right now. We're putting an X on them. We have, on the other side of Arizona, there's an allotment owner there. His numbers have just been cut in half because he's next to the blue. He's either in primitive or wilderness. Down mental creek at the end of our road is proposed wilderness. Between the reserve and Alma, proposed wilderness. We're putting X's on those ranchers. I do not see in the Endangered Species Act where it says that wolves should be contained in wilderness. It says wolves should be in every of the facility, every of the area. Everyone has to comply to this. But it also says valid existing rights. So when you go to Washington DC, they shouldn't be thinking wolves wilderness, wolves wilderness. They should be thinking wolves, ranchers, existing valid existing rights. We are hurting the ranchers in the future, I'm afraid. I don't know what to do about this petition. But I ask that you not use that wording and take it to the Secretary of the Interior where he hears wolves in wilderness. Even though the idea is that they're contained, if they go out, we can remove them. He's still hearing wolves in wilderness. So, thank you.
Just something, an observation of mine over the past couple of months. And when Mrs. Nelson comes here and she talks about wilderness, she's driving her hand. Wolves have no business in our county and no place. They've proven that they're a medical failure. And I'm not going to sit here as an elected official anymore and try to sing kumbaya with all the federal people and all the people that want me to be buzzy warm about something that I know in my heart is bad. I drive by the pine lawn and I see them jackhammering up semen out there. That was probably one of the greatest potential places for a campground. Here in the Hila, we're one of the biggest forests in the nation. And we have 30 or less campgrounds across the whole, across the whole forest. So, we're really encouraging people to come here and spend their money and business. We also have our brothers and sisters of the conservation gangs down in Silver City wanting to pass Wild and Scenic River on us here on the San Francisco River in the Hila. And that's every tributary, that's anything that runs into us. And I encourage every one of you to get that Wild and Scenic doctrine and reading. Because in 25 years from when they enact that, they can take your properties away from you. They can stop your commercial use, they can take your water rights. And you go down to those meetings and you see these gangrene people sitting up there shaking their heads and when people are speaking the truth. But the saddest thing is the apathy of people. The Grant County ranchers that were in that meeting, they got up and said nothing. Three commissioners that come from other counties that spoke out against it. Wild and scenic and pincing the cattle off of the river never was an issue until we started getting closer with AWSA water and the New Mexico cat. And the potential for the southwest area in money is quite a bit. Not in our lifetime, but in our children's lifetime, it really could make a difference. It could make a difference how we live in this county if we could capture that water and use it. So I'm just telling you that these conservation groups, that's a reality out there. They're organized, they're sophisticated, and they got a lot of money behind them. So you know, when the Forest Service comes along with the watershed proposal in an area here in our county, you should take the time to get the papers and read it and see how it's going to impact you. We have one in the Glenwood district. But I think it's, you know, the first thing I think about wild and scenic and watershed work and everything, what does it do? What does it change? What is watershed? Wild and scenic change on the river? And I'm getting on my soapbox, I'll show you. But what do they do to improve the river? What is their plan? Absolutely nothing. Absolutely nothing. What they do is they set up county and state and city governments for lawsuits. Because they've got a lot more money than we do. They've got a lot more lawyers. We can't just sit back and let them do these things without at least hearing from us, you know? And I hope that we can, Matt and Laura Sneberger are friends of mine. And they've really been beat up just like Cora and Holsey and some of these other folks. I hope they can find some solution to help them out. They're in another county, but they count. This gentleman that's over in another state, he counts. Because he's suffering the same thing as Mr. Holsey and some of these other folks that get beat up all the time by the wolves. So, I hope we can fix that.
Snebergers have a part in that county too.
The what?
Snebergers are partly in that county also.
Right, you're right. Thank you, thank you.
I have to agree with every two weeks and I think it needs to change.
At one of the last meetings, I got a notice from the Forest Service that they were going to put pesticides in the whitewater again at the end of this month. Is that a foregone conclusion or is there something that we could say to naysay that practice?
It's something they do yearly. They did it last year at this time as well.
I remember that. Don't we have a groundwater issue?
And they don't call it pesticides, it's pesticides. And I'm not exactly, it's just to kill off certain things.
Right, supposedly invasive species.
Right.
But this is the second time, well, like you say, once every year. Isn't there a danger that that's going to accumulate in the aquifer?
They have come in and done that yearly for some time. So, I mean, you can contact the game and fish and they'll have to give you a report on that. But they just notified the county that they were doing that. And it's been common practice, so I probably don't have all the details that I should.
They don't approach you for any sort of authority or anything?
No, they ask for comments and you can request a meeting and you can, you have the right to get them to cease and desist. We haven't done that in the past.
Why don't we do that?
Can I? I think it's part of the Hila trout program. I received a call from Kirk Patton, who's the head of fisheries. And I think the pesticide of whatever they use is to poison the fish species that they don't want in there with the Hila trout. And you know, because the game and fish manages this, and I encourage you to get the, all the materials on retino, the poison that they use. If that's the case, and if that's what this is about, I think it is, I think it is. I encourage you to read it, read it from beginning to end and see how they do it. It's very sophisticated, it's very controlled, they're very cautious. Retino has no impact on human beings whatsoever. And they also treat it with another substance that makes it inert after the treatment has happened. For the catwalk, for these streams, in my opinion, for the recreation of this county and for the Glenwood hatchery, I think it's a pretty good program. And I think it's, I think it's worth having. And I think that, I think you should read that doctrine or that booklet, Steve, you know, about retino and why they're treating the creek and what they're doing. And it's, it's going to actually be, I think, in the way upper headwaters of the wild water.
So you think it would have no impact on the wells in Glenwood?
I can't say that. I don't, I can't know that. But I think that there's, it's addressed and they're informational. And I will gladly give you Mr. Patton's number, his office.
Thank you very much.
And get his, it'll take me a while to get it, but I will give it to you.
You got my number. Thank you, Bucky.
Bartman agency reports, Forest Service is here. Maybe he'll be back, he said he has a microphone call. Go to the manager's report.
I'll keep it short, we have a long meeting today. We do have a trip planned to Washington DC with Sierra County to go and present, and not just the petition, actually the petition is just a part of it. Because we're trying, it is the goal. It is the goal to take the wolves off the Endangered Species Act. That's the goal. The goal is to take them off and allow ranchers to manage their land the way they should be able to manage their land. That's the ultimate goal. And the petition, even if it's written wrong, we have a significant number of signatures so that they will understand that there is concern. And so hopefully, hopefully that will go well. Still trying to set that up with the Department of the Interior. It's slated for the first part of October. The Greenskap Road Project has been started, the gravel is, the swamps is finished, the gravel production. If you go by highway, on Highway 12, you'll see a new mountain on the side of the road. It's a big pile of gravel and that road's going to be significantly improved once we finish with that. We are receiving a letter, I got a note today, or this morning, from the Senator's office that they will be sending shortly a response on the scenic rivers for us. And so I thought, if they're just sending me that reply, our meeting was in the first of June, maybe by December, you're going to get something from them. But I did, I did contact them and ask them, you know, how come we received no response? And I did receive that from them, but that a letter would be forthcoming.
Mr. Chairman. Bill. If you would, you know, write them back a letter and tell them that a letter's not good enough. That we expect a visit in April. I mean, if we can have a meeting in April, we can send them a letter in March and have a meeting in April, and send it to Hyatt, and send it to Reed. Don't even respond to it. And did Mrs. Small or Socio, did she ever respond to our letter?
Not on this, not on this. She, no, I didn't, I didn't get a response. I get, this is from, this came from Hyatt's office.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm one of three commissioners here. That's the way I feel. I think that's, I think that's all disgusting.
I pretty much agree. They need to, they came to our meeting, they sent representatives to our meeting, they listened, and then we never heard from them. And in the meantime, they sent out a press release saying how much they were in favor of scenic rivers. That's what I got from them so far. So, Mr. Chairman, I will, I stand for questions and we have a lot to cover today.
I don't have too much to say. You guys got the reports. I'll get talking too much, I'm going to start, but so, I have any questions on it? We had the auditors in last week. That kind of went fairly well. And they're going to be back October 7th and do some more auditing, so that's all I have to say.
They were, they were in depth.
They were.
They really, they really came through. And we asked them a lot of, a lot of hard questions too. So I expect some help from them, don't you Connie?
Yes, yes, they really, I really liked them. I liked Debbie Gray, I've asked her questions and she's going to give me the answers and they were really, I really liked the whole team.
Well, they didn't just point out, hey, you're doing this wrong?
No.
They would say, hey, this is wrong, this is what we suggest you do.
We do, yeah.
So I like that, I like Karen.
Me too.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the finance report?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Prove the treasurer's finance report, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So Forest Service, come back in.
Thank you. Apologize for that, juggling meetings. So John Pearson's not able to be here today, so I'm not sure what I can necessarily answer for him. But if there's questions, I can definitely pass them on. Right now, as far as the forest, we're, we're closing out our fiscal year. We're also planning for next fiscal year as far as our program will work. So we've got quite a bit kind of hanging out there, waiting to see where things shake out in terms of our budget and capacity. But staffing's pretty good right now, so that's nice. And we're anticipating a similar budget for last year. And I can tell you as far as the Glenwood district that we're, the prioritization on some of the projects there, having completed some of the stuff up or working towards completion up in the Luna planning area, that we are looking for the next large planning work to be happening on Glenwood as a forest. That'd be where we'd be shifting the next priorities. So that's really good news because it's been lacking for a while just in terms of where those priorities have shaken out. So, other things we've got going on, we're still working on that Powerhouse Road, planning on opening that up. That's to provide some UTV OHV opportunities to get down from, from the Burson, well, if you come off the Burson and go down into Powerhouse to connect up into the Whitewater to provide those opportunities. And so, pretty optimistic that that'll happen with our engineering. And then we've been doing a lot of work up in Whitewater, Whitewater Creek, up in that area. We will be doing another fish treatment up in Whitewater. It will not close the catwalk, just wanted to let folks know. So that's, we've worked that out with the game and fish. So we're anticipating that, based off what game and fish was telling us, that we will be able to start that reintroduction without having to go back in and do any more treatments. So that's our hope. And then also stocking that lower half. I've noticed, I don't know if we've been up there, but definitely increased presence of people going up and fishing, which is what we want to see, so that's good. And then, see, another topic we have coming up is we are looking at any areas on our allotments that have not been covered, where we need to do consultation with Fish and Wildlife Service. So we're trying to get all of those through consultation. So that's good. And then the, joint with Arizona, the state line planning, EPA planning for our allotments, we're in that objection period. And we're anticipating that we will be able to sign those in, a decision in December, depending on how things play out. But that's very important for us because we've been coordinating quite a bit with NRCS to provide those funds to help with range improvements. So that's what we're anticipating moving forward with that. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
And I mean, this, it's rumor speculation, so maybe you can help with that debate. But I've heard that Verizon and other cellular providers want to put towers in this area and it's been blocked by the Forest Service. Is there any truth to that?
That's what I'll definitely want to follow up on. I do know that as far as our permitting process, we, so that's another thing in terms of capacity and staffing, is we have stood up a special use permitting and lands group to help work through that so that things just don't stay on the back burner forever. But I'll ask specifically about that. I know there was some conversation, it wasn't actually on this district, but on Black Range. So I will follow up on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I mean, if that's okay.
I thought of this the other day. And I'd be glad to say in public because it needs to be out there a little bit. If we're, if the allotments are short on grass drought, it's very easy to cut down, cut back the cow numbers. But Forest Service job is taking care of the trees and the watershed. So wouldn't it be during drought season that you should be cutting the trees? Because trees drink a lot of water. And this is, maybe I shouldn't ask a question. Let me just put that out there that I would like your department to.
So I do, I will say, what we're looking at for a large planning area on the Glenwood district is moving there from Sacatoon to some of the, where you get some of the woodlands, moving up towards through Dry Creek. Looking at woodland restoration, grassland, and a lot of that is reducing juniper where it could be historically seen as encroaching or for preventing migration for wildlife as well. The benefit is you're reducing the juniper so they're not taking up as much water and it's also producing grass that serves other functions. So that is part of, part of the planning area to see where that would be appropriate. We're talking about thousands, tens of thousands of acres for that project.
Yes. Perry, given a big part of the three memorable programs that you have comes from the RAC money. That's done through the RAC programs and those things. But one of the things, isn't it, that the local folks should stay very active and very involved in encouraging not just the district rangers, but supervisors' offices to try to facilitate both things in and have luck. Because you know, I'm thinking about this morning, those areas that have been pushed, there's a big difference if they get rain. And those PJs drink a lot of water and they don't do very much good. So I would encourage folks to help these guys out, you know? Go talk to them, go visit with them, John, Eric.
Yeah, and on up, I mean, I'm okay with having, being told by regional foresters that, hey, people really want this to happen. All right, that's great, we're here and I'll pass that word up. But looking at it as our analysis, so there's multiple benefits when we're looking at that juniper or those treatment areas. Because it also can, we're looking at expanding field wood areas. So we can improve grasses, improve woodland, improve migration or... looking at expanding fuel wood areas. So, we can improve grasses, improve woodland, improve migration or opportunities for hunting. There's grazing potential for that in certain areas, obviously helping the watershed. Oh, and fuels, that's really great, so, you know, people can get fuel wood. So, looking at those multiple benefits.
So, are we gonna say a banner, support your, your local Forest Service, cut down a tree? Sorry, sorry.
Cut a tree, save a horse.
I'll run that by the PAO, Public Affairs. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll do the discussion items. Revision of policy regarding time limits, check, bond and use. Right now, we have a one, we'd like somebody to check they have one year in the cabinet. I would like to see that changed to ninety days, but I guess the question is, can we do that?
Is that legal, Dave? Can we do that? Can we, can we make check cashing a ninety day policy instead of a one year? Or are we stuck by state statute?
Are you looking into that? I'm not sure.
I was sort of like, I think that's a, I think it's a federal, I think that's just how long checks are, you know? And that's a, a banking contract in the Commerce. So, I think it'd be a, I, I think they're good for a year, but I haven't looked into that. I think definitely we can start making inquiries long before that, like where's, where's the check and why hasn't it been deployed?
I, I, I called around, but, I mean, I didn't, I didn't find out about the state.
Yeah.
And I, and I thought maybe you should...
I think it would be a, a federal law if, if it was. I don't think the state would change it.
I don't, I don't, there's not another county that I know of that does a ninety day policy. But they didn't, they didn't tell me, they just said, no, this is our policy. But they didn't say the state statute. When I asked you the state statute, well, I'm not sure. So, I was just wondering.
It's federal, but they honor the check up to a year.
I think so.
And if you want to put must be cashed within ninety days, that's fine. We can do that, but the banks do not have to honor that, because their policy is it's good for a year.
But we could put it on there? Well, we, we need to check and see. If we can put some local restrictions on there, I believe, I, I agree with Chairman.
But the banks, we could put it on there, but the banks still have to honor the one year before it's stale made.
They would be in violation of their contract with us if they set on checks forever, which might move them along.
I think as far as, there, I, I'm not sure that there is a necessary regulation. I think Kathy, you know, and you have hit on it correctly, it is a, it is a question of the bank. So, I think that maybe the, the answer would be to have a discussion with, have direct staff to have a discussion with First State Bank and, and see if we can enter into an agreement with them, since we will not honor checks from Katron County after thirty days, I mean, ninety days. And, and we make it a, you know, to have a discussion with the bank as far as what they honor. And what they require from us, they may ask us to put it in policy, or they may just need us to sign some, sign off on something. So, if that's something the commission's willing to do, I think we're just certainly, we can certainly have that discussion with First State.
So, Chairman, I'm not sure, but I, I think probably if we look at that two ways, one, if we can do this, and the other, look at possible programs like the bank has of, of insuring, and probably do one or the other. The other, the, what the ninety day policy would probably do would save us from doing a whole, a whole extra step in the policy for the Finance Department. But I, I agree, we need to make sure, we need, we, we may need to make sure that we're not in the position we were in last year with that check. So, I think we come up with one or the other thing before he has to...
Just what I'm looking at real quick, I think Adrian's right. I think we can make an agreement with the bank to honor it for less time, and they would just print our checks with, with that timeframe on it.
Okay.
But I will, I will finish the meeting with that, let me see.
Okay. We'll get a letter to the bank.
Okay, we'll do the next. Is that a review of the software presentations? So, Tyler came and gave us a presentation. This is a call.
You have a, you have it in your, you have it in your pamphlet, and it's not, it's not cut and dried. Tyler's, Tyler's bid is three eight seven seven four seven, and, but that includes, that includes the one, the one-time setup fee. There, but there, when you take that setup fee off, they're still, and they're willing to negotiate, but it's still gonna be at least sixty to a hundred thousand dollars more a year, correct?
Yes.
To, to run the Tyler program. There, there's some, there's some real benefits, and for the, for the ladies that sat in on the programs, I'd love for them to be able to speak on this, too. The Tyler program, I think, blows away the Triadic program, but, but the expense is, is quite a bit more. What it would really help out more than anybody, if I'm correct, it would help out the, the Assessor's Office. The, the program they have is very good for the Assessor, the Assessor's Office. But it would be, I, I thought it was much better all the way around, didn't you, ladies?
Okay, okay. Treasurer's Office, when they print the tax bills, right now, we can mine residential, non-residential, and personal property together in one bill. Tyler, everything will be separate. Water, your water rates, anything like that. So, that means I'll be printing five different tax bills. My postage will quadruple. People will probably get upset to get six tax bills, because Tyler can't combine things together, where Triadic can and keep track and sort it in their program. That's the only thing. Everybody I know that has Tyler in the Treasurer's Office, they have special meetings with Tyler about every two months. So, that means I would be traveling to go to these special Tyler meetings for their software and their issues. That's one thing I have against it.
I'm speaking for Lily Laney for the Assessor. She was not able to be here today, and she went to, she tried to go to Grant County. They couldn't accommodate her on the, on the very next day after the Tyler presentation. But the presentation is just a presentation. It's a sales pitch. So, she wanted to go see what Tyler actually could do. And so, her and Scotty went up, and she says, yes, it, it can do stuff, but hers was the same. They had to, she'd have to print more. And after seeing it, yes, it has a lot more bells and whistles, and, and it can, it can do different programs, produce different reports, colored reports, and all the fancy stuff. The, she said that after we've sat down with Triadic on Monday and visited with them, she found that there, as some of the other departments, there's a lot on Triadic that is not being utilized. She did not realize that she could use the field unit, that there was a field unit that was available. And I believe Leandra got her a cost on that, but I don't know what it, what it was.
Yeah, they, they met after the meetings.
Yeah, so I, I don't know on that. But as far as cost, Tyler is more, but we're still just not, we're not utilizing the Triadic program. It is a DOS program. It is older. It is slower. But at the same time...
It can do the same thing.
It's still doing the same thing.
So, we drive a Chevy instead of a Cadillac, you know? But it does the same thing. And the tax bills, I mean, that's the best part of Triadic is the tax bill. And we go messing around. Okay, the mill levy, Tyler cannot do the mill levy change that's coming up. They're gonna have to, they're writing a special program so they can handle these new, the delayed tax bills. You know how much...
And they charge for this.
Yeah, they charge for that. I mean, and it's gonna add extra costs to the county. Now, I'm just having a delay, and everybody's gonna rush after the election to push those, to get their tax bills printed. I already talked to our printing company. He says, no problem. They're, they're setting gear for this mass mailing, and so they're gonna go on overtime. They got two plants, one in Arizona and one in Utah. So, they're all geared up for this election thing with the other counties. But, yeah, Tyler's got, you know, fancy reports. Maybe it's a little quicker. The girls can do stuff, but Triadic, for the money, does the same thing.
So, as Treasurer, if we switched over to Tyler, I've not been a fan of switching to Tyler. It's just too expensive. But if we did switch, would you have to continue a short-term contract with Triadic to do all the software?
Probably so. And last time I talked with...
There's a one year, it takes two years to do it, but one full year where you're running two programs.
So, I have that added cost on top of it, because we still have to have contracts with Triadic to do the software, correct?
Correct.
So, that's not included in this bid process, that Triadic has not.
And so, the Treasurer's program that Tyler presents does not fit my office. And so, we're a small county. I overlap and do other duties. Last, last time they were, not this time, but the time before, I finally got the engineers sit down in my office, and they were with me for an hour. And I showed them what I did, what reports I printed. They said, well, you would need this add-on, this add-on, and this add-on. Well, how much would that cost? At that time, it was over three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just for the Treasurer's Office. So, that's not, that's, so you, they're giving you a base price, but then after you have all the add-ons to do, it's...
It gets expensive. Now, the last I met with Lily, she was pushing for it, so I just wanted to say...
And so, she saw hands-on.
Right.
She rented so much.
She wanted Tyler, but apparently she's changed that.
And, and I, I just, just from a finance point of view, I think, I have to agree. I think Tyler is good and it's a Cadillac, but it's like, I don't, Katron County doesn't need a Cadillac right now. You know what I mean? It's a, maybe in a few years down the road or whatever. But I know that there's a lot of programs, and just from accounts payable, that are not being utilized. And it's just simply because nobody has let us know they're there. Nobody has trained us on it. So, if we choose to stay with Triadic, I would suggest that Triadic comes up to our offices and runs through each department separately to actually show them what is, you know, what they can, what they can, a presentation, like I said, just a presentation. It doesn't show you everything, but there is, there is a lot there that can be utilized. And I think, I think Tyler can get very, very expensive, very expensive.
It sounds like the add-ons are gonna really add on, and we may be getting ourselves into...
Yeah, and so, this is not an action item. It'll be an action item next month. It's just a discussion.
To be the one, probably, cold water. Over the last six, seven years, I've been stopped, basically, by every department in the courthouse, mission officer. I don't know about you, Connie, I think they, a long time early on, you weren't an advocate at Triad, on the old day, way back then. Correct me if I'm wrong. Lily stopped me and told me a lot of trouble she's had with them. I think Linda has maybe said something to me in passing. Maybe it wasn't Linda, maybe it was somebody else. So, there was complaints about their staff in Triad and how they were helping out. Are they intimidating to you when they come up here? Do they really have a good, clean heart? Do they try to help?
I can speak for my office and my two girls. We, if we have a problem, we can call them at that date, and they work on it right then and there. It's not a work ticket like Tyler.
Do they come up here from their offices?
Oh, do they come up? Well, um, no, but we're invited down there, and we have taken trips down there. When they come up to visit, right now, and the contract is eight hundred dollars if they come up here and spend the day with them.
So, when you have a big hiccup that's on them?
Yeah.
And you girls know it's on them. Do they come?
They can do it from, they can do it from their office. We get online with them, and they can get in our system. And we can, you know, show them what, what's going on. And so, they work on it right then and there at the moment, from their office.
And so, does their software communicate with the state agencies and the other people that you have to work with?
Right.
Yes.
Yes, usually they're ahead of, if the state has changes, Triadic, from talking to the other Treasurers, are usually ahead of the program than Tyler. Tyler's usually a step behind. So, Mike is very good keeping up with the state law changes. Right now, heads up, state is changing the counting system again. They're talking about going to a twenty-two number program, and we got nine right now. So, that's gonna be another big change in the Treasurer's Office, in the GLs.
I think, Bucky, you're right. In the past, there has been a lot of complaints from all the departments on Triadic. However, I, my personal feeling is it's because we, we did not realize everything that was truly available. And I think that's, and now, we're all realizing what is, what is in there, what we can utilize, what can be done. So, I, I mean, I do agree, there was complaints. I was one of the complainers against them until I realized, okay, wait a minute, I can do this, and I can have this program or whatever. So, but you're right, there was complaints.
And you didn't have a computer background?
I've never been a fan of switching just because of the cost. But looking at the software, if Triadic can do the same thing with a little bit of training, until they really have problems with the software, I don't think we should change. But that's, the cost is just too much. I mean, it's...
We, we, our, our major hiccup over the past year, and that's all I can talk about, our major hic, hiccup with Triadic, was working with Robert off-site an Apple computer that, that did not work. And so, he had to resend things. And so, we got numbers mixed up that way that we had to continue working with. And I, I think by bringing everything into Becky's office, that has taken care of most of that, hasn't it? I, I think so.
So, this bid, where we talked one year, one eighty-seven thousand, is that Triadic for one year?
No, this is...
Three year.
That's three years.
Three-year contract.
So, and the two twenty-five from Tyler's, three years, right? Or is that one year?
There's...
I wouldn't, yeah.
It's, it's...
It's two twenty-five after setup, right?
After setup for the three years.
But that doesn't include the contract that we still have with Triadic until we transfer.
Right, yeah.
Nor does it include the add-ons.
But I mean, if you're looking for, in the, in the long, if you're looking in the long run, you're right. You're, you're looking at the two twenty-five compared to the one eighty-seven.
Yeah, that's not...
It's, it's just the, it's the initial, it's the, it's the initial cost.
Well, I know we have a big issue with payroll. We're saving a lot of money outsourcing payroll. We're not having to pay somebody to be payroll, but we're still paying somebody to do all the payroll stuff, because the guy doing the, doing the work cannot communicate with anybody because of Triadic.
So, we can...
We've got a dinosaur, and nobody knows how to work the dinosaur. You know, I don't know. It's...
Okay, Cliff, that, that, that you need to talk to Triadic, because Triadic has talked to payroll company, and payroll company won't talk to Triadic. And I'll stick up for Triadic on that, because I had to talk, I've talked to them. And they've contacted me on payroll, how to gain touch of them. I've tried calling payroll company. They will not talk to anybody in Katron County. So, to me, it's all payroll company.
I just know the definition.
I, I think, I think there's a program that, I think that we can switch it to Triadic. And I don't know why it was, isn't that way. I know that there was a, a problem in personnel some years ago, and that's when it got switched. And, and I, I think there was valid reason for that and everything, so, but I think that there's a program that we should probably switch to, but it wouldn't cost us anymore. to. It wouldn't cost us anymore.
We're already paying for it.
Yeah. Where, the thing of it is, is right now, the payroll on our end, Lou's having to input all the data into a special format anyway already and then send it off-site. So, it's double duty. She could, if she could, if it was in, if it was brought back in-house, she would input that data one time. It doesn't go out. It's already in there. And then you generate the payroll, you know? So, it's like, it's kind of double duty going on right now.
And it's really, and Lou gets behind on payroll, which throws all my books off. I remember a couple of years ago, we had a million dollars out in payroll that was not recorded. And it was through all the books out, all the quarterly reports off. And that was a big issue. It was a big blow-up. And there was a lot of hard feelings over it because it's not done in real time. And then, a lot of times, the input information being carried over doesn't get into the right GLs. Sherry Perez is a good one. She, she can be in every department. Sometimes, her payroll creates new departments. And I have to catch this stuff. So, I'm spending three to six hours a week going through the GLs just to try, trying to find payroll mistakes.
See, I'm getting this all wrapped here. I shouldn't even butt that up. It may not have a thing to do with Triatic. Maybe we, none of us know how to run the thing. I don't know. It's like, why can't we figure this out? Do it.
Okay. I got with Lily. She's at the doctor right now, but I got with her. And she said, yes, I would prefer Tyler. It does weigh more, but understands the cost. And she says, if we keep Triatic, she goes, well, I'll just have to live with it. So, that's her comment.
Okay, this is discussion. Let's go to something.
Can I just add one thing, please? One last comment.
Okay.
So, I've dealt with software companies in the past and you never have leverage like you do when you're doing a switch. So, right now, since this switch is on the table, extract everything, if you keep Triatic, get from them everything you can. Get free training, get whatever you want. Tell them you want it. And you say, we're thinking about this switch. So, you convince me not to make this switch and you can get some freebies from them.
All right. Detention budget, Sheriff's Department. We have a detention budget? Never did, but I'm sure.
It's corrections. It's corrections. It's correction fee.
It's a correction budget.
That's a new department for the employees. Don't...
Okay. This was not, the corrections budget was, was not done. And so, in order to make up for the downfall, we have several plans. It's gonna have to be something that's, that is, the corrections is taken care of in the future. And hopefully, what I wanted, what I would like to see happen is the Sheriff's Department break up their budgets like the clerk's office has. So, we can, we can better manage the money and know what, know what needs to be where. How we're gonna cover it this year is Becky and Connie have $58,000 that was in another line item that really shouldn't have been there. We're gonna transfer that into the detention budget. The Sheriff's Department thinks they can throw in another $15,000 to $20,000 from personnel that they're not using to help cover it. And the commission will probably have to throw in another $20,000 on top of that. And hopefully, that will cover it for this year.
There's never been a correction budget.
Yes.
They have corrections that the state used to give us quite a bit of money, which they don't give us hardly anything these days. But, we never had anything budgeted for corrections.
Right. You have, so what you have was the revenue that comes in on that correction being, this is what caused the problem. So, you can't budget more, more than what you're bringing in. So, the revenue on that line item is pretty much only like about $15,000. And so, that's what we got with them and said, look, we need to figure something else out because it was budgeted in the budget for $15,000. We did budget that, but it's not enough to cover that fund. And so, that's where we're at. We're trying to cover that fund. So, but your, pretty much revenue coming in is only gonna be about $15,000 a year.
Yeah, that's covering the street.
Right. Exactly.
So, there's really not a budget for the detention. It's just the line item called correction. And if you remember, we were always transporting money into that one line.
It's a, it's a black hole. But, we can't, the auditors, I mean, the auditors, you can't have, you can't just go along with a budget in the red. We have to cover it. We have to look at it and we have to plan ahead. And it's better to plan ahead and try to make sure that next year, we don't get into this because money's gotta come from somewhere. And, and so, we're gonna be cutting the commission budget, the Sheriff's Department budget, and we're gonna use these extra funds. And hopefully, that will get us through this year. But, next year, we need to plan ahead and probably, and need that, we need to have $100,000 there. Minimum. Right now, we're projected, if we, if we went along with our expenditures for the last two months, we'd spend over $150,000 if it stayed the same as the last two months.
That deal is a huge, huge black hole.
Yeah, because right now, at the end of August, we're $32,238 in the red.
On the correction line item?
Correction. That's just for two months. So, you're spending almost $16,000.
And something needs to be done because I can't continue to approve expenditures on that line item in the red. I can't do it. Legally, I can't do it.
So, that's, that's the game plan. This is a discussion right now, but it'll be, it'll be an action item next month. Unless somebody else has a better idea. What's that?
At least it's an action item today.
Oh, it's the 58,000?
Yes. Yeah.
But, we're, but we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to move more. And Ian has looked at his budget and, and I'm willing, and I think we have, we have to take that.
I'm lying here, but I would just like to ask, why is there not someone here from the Sheriff's Office to talk about this and discuss?
Stacy had to go to a training and Ian is the only one in the office right now.
Okay. We had, took, took the gross receipt tax from the ambulance fund and put it back in the general fund. Couldn't we designate that money that the ambulance fund was getting to the correction line item? I think gross receipts can be moved to correction, no, correction line item.
Oh, I thought on one of the resolutions that that general money was going back to, was going to the Sheriff's, no?
No.
Okay.
No.
It's just going to the general.
Yeah, from the ambulance going to the general. Can't we step it, go into the general, take it to the correction line item? That way, it wouldn't affect the general anymore. It's already budgeted. And, and this is gonna be the first of the year when this kicks in.
Can you, can you guys in jail, less deputies, less people in jail, less...
Problem solved.
Yeah. Well, this way, the Sheriff's Department wouldn't have to cut their budget either. I mean, it might be enough to cover it. It's been, Will got out today.
I believe that's something to look at.
Yeah. Will got out today.
Let's not mention names, but I would say, I would say that's, that's a valid thing to look at, to use that money.
I don't, me personally, I don't, I don't see the Sheriff's Office ever being able to cut their budget. I think it's gonna be, get higher and higher every year. So, I mean, it has to be looked at because I don't, I just think there's expenditures there that are not gonna go away and we have to deal with them.
Right. And gross receipt tax would be one way to deal with it.
Okay. I think, anyway, we're just looking at that right now. We're telling you what we're gonna do right now. In the future, that might be something to look at.
Communication's concerned. Let's go on to something.
All right.
Something that doesn't cost nearly as much as we do.
But, still gonna cost. Okay. Larry, would you stand up, please? I'd like to introduce you guys to Larry Mazz. Larry moved here and Larry has been in communications most of his life. He retired here and has taken an interest in our communications program, program and problems. And has, he has extensive knowledge in the area and has been a, a big benefit. I've met with him and Ian several times. He's actually went out and, with Gilbert, to the people we contract with right now. But, we have some massive problems and we have a guy here with talent that's willing to, to help out. And so, Larry, I'd like you to give a brief overview and this will just be kind of an introductory thing. And then we'll probably come to him later with a, with a big game plan.
Okay. My name is Larry Monique. I haven't retired here just for a few months now. And I, I'm a retired firefighter. After the disability retirement with the fire department, I started my own two-way radio business. And I'm an SCC licensed radio tech. Had my own business for about 11 years, but I have some pretty darn good experience in county-wide communications. I set one up for a county of, I think, about 60,000 people. And 20 years ago roughly, I still work fine. So, I've had just a little bit of time in the last, I don't know, couple of months roughly to look into our system. And I've not had the opportunity, availability, or access to get to all of our actual sites or places of, where the radio equipment is installed. But, from the ground, from what I can tell below, and from doing research and talking to other people, we have some extremely big issues in this county, communication side, to the point where if we don't do something with licensing and coordinating the frequencies on a bigger level, we run the risk of being shut down. So, there's gonna be an extensive amount of late work and research to be done to address this and figure out what our overall game plan should be, to rebuild a good foundation to build on, rather than try and piecemeal the old foundation that never is working properly. And to do that is gonna require a lot of time. So, and some funds, unfortunately. I think in the last couple of months, I've spent 80 to 100 hours researching this and trying to figure out what our history's been and where we've been and what we can do. Got a pretty good idea of what we can do to at least get started and move forward. I'm doing this all on a strictly voluntary basis, as time available. And I don't have near the equipment I used to or the vehicle access to get to top of the hilltops and that sort of thing to do this. I'm willing to do everything I can to help. I first started as a member of Forest County Volunteer Fire Department, just to see what I could do with all of the communications problems. And it turned out to be a county-wide situation. It's pretty great. But, I just found out in the last few days. It's extremely great. We really have to pay attention to it.
Larry and Ian and I will prepare a report for you guys for next month with, with kind of, with kind of a game plan. But, I just wanted you to know the amount of time and effort that Larry's put in pro bono. And he has already pointed out some significant problems for us without looking for personal gain. So, there's something wrong with him. But, I really think that we have the ability to actually fix a lot of the communications problems without costing millions of dollars. And we've already put, we've already put tons and tons of money into these things with some companies that have basically fleeced us. And so, I wanted you guys to meet Larry. And he and I and Ian met this morning and Linda, and we reviewed some of the things we need to go over. And I think he's gonna be a great asset for the county. Do you have any questions for him?
Any comments or questions or insight?
Weren't you happy before?
Pardon me, sir?
Weren't you happy doing that though?
I was. I retired twice and I was happy doing that until I thought foolishly about doing something else. And to be honest, we do this as a much bigger kettle of fish than I even thought it could possibly be. Much bigger. But, that doesn't mean I'm stepping away with it with support from Ian and Bill and you all. I think we can at least get to the, and I'm not willing to climb towers and do all the work I used to do. We need a radio shop, but we need a reliable, trustworthy, honest person we can get with and somebody here in the county that can wine stall and make sure they're doing what we want to our benefit. And I'm willing to do that for now and see what we can do to help them get us where we need to be. At least get us back to the 90s and then we can build.
Actually, we're up to the 90s.
Up to the 90s.
Then they will come into this thing. And it can be done. It's gonna be a huge project, but it can be done. We, right now, we've got two major systems, fire and SL Sheriff's Office. Fire's in bad shape. The Sheriff's Department's in extremely bad shape. We have officer safety issues out there that concern me. And we really need to address this.
It's, I have said this for the last three or four years, it's bad. It needs to get fixed. And one of the biggest problems that I've stressed is when we put somebody in charge, we're seeing the contact of radio guy and they know absolutely nothing about radios, you get fleeced.
Well, and we get talked into it. And we, and that's, that has happened to us in the past. We just keep, well, if that's what we need, we'll do it. And it turns out, it's not what we need. It's what he needed so we could be in debt to him. That's what it basically is. But, I know we have a long meeting. I just wanted you guys to meet Larry and we will come up with a game plan for you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for checking.
I need all the disrespect, but I need to take off. Is that's all right for you all? Do you have any other questions?
No. If you have a meeting and you're part of it, you stay for the whole game.
Thank you, Larry Monique.
Okay. EMS concerns regarding senior service.
I've included a letter from Genevieve in your, in your packets. And we'll turn the time over to her.
Good morning. I'm Genevieve Rowland. I'm the regional director for Presbyterian Medical Centers. And we operate the medical, medical clinics here in Reserve and they come off of, plus a lot of other clinics. And I almost feel bad after hearing your prior discussions coming before you. But, as you know, the area aging people, the aging long-term care department came to you to a meeting a month ago, maybe, a couple of months ago, asking you all if you would be willing to take over the management and running up the senior centers in your county. And there's three, three locations. One in the one in Camado and of course, the one here. And they also approached us and asked us if we would be willing to, to take over the operations if, if you all weren't interested. And I think you, you told them that it was too risky, too much of a financial risk. It's also a financial risk for us. So, I'm, I'm before you today, wondering and asking if there's any way that we can partner to be able to keep those essential services in the county. We have an aging population in this county. And I know that they serve literally thousands of meals throughout the county. And some of those meals are served to people who are homebound and can't, and that may be the only meal they get or the only meals that they get. So, in my letter, I basically have also disclosed to you that we operate the, the medical clinics. Both clinics are operating at a financial loss right now. And if they stay on track through July, they already have $157,164, $157,164,000 loss. If they stay on that same track, we're looking at close to a $270,000 loss by the end of the year. So, we are also not in a position to be able to pick up a program that could lose money potentially. I mean, we, we know that we're not, we run senior center programs, I personally, in my region, in the county county. Those are two rural, very rural locations out in the Rama and the Brew. And we almost break even. And so, for us, again, we were approached by the county and the, and the state and that county to, to see if we could operate those centers. So, we have expertise. We bring expertise to the table. They're not easy programs to run. And so, they're very difficult. So, again, I'm here wondering if we could partner to keep these services. What our request would be if we were to go back to the state. I haven't negotiated with the state yet. So, our request, you know, I wanna see what, how you guys feel about this partnership. If you would continue to fund the, I think you give 20,000 annually for operations, that...
I think 16, Village gives 4.
Uh, okay, 16. So, I included the full 20. I was mistaken. Thank you for that correction. So, that's less than $6,000 per facility. You have three facilities in the county. So, I said 20 in my request. It would help offset the costs if the county... It would help offset the costs if the county would pick up the facility repairs and maintenance, 100% of that. I don't have a number for that. And the utility costs, the utility costs for one year do come to about 27,800 dollars. So depending on your decision, I know you're not a rich county, I know that you're financially strapped. We are also struggling to try to do what we do in this county. So if we lose the senior center services, if we can't partner, it would be very difficult for some people. But the state does not have an obligation to provide those services. They have an obligation to do due diligence, to find somebody to manage and operate those programs. So that's my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
An increase of 30,000 on top of what we've given?
So just the facility repairs and maintenance, there's no number in there? That's an unknown variable, so.
Most of the building maintenance that we have...
Well, actually, we kind of, we kind of already do that. And there's $40,000 from the legislature per facility. So I think we'd be setting pretty good there.
Well, the maintenance that we've done, we've done in the past, it's capped out, I believe at 10,000 a year. Because after it gets to a large item, it goes back to the state. In what I understood.
It's a minimum of 10,000 dollars for the capital funds. So you can't claim anything that's less than 10,000.
So the county takes it up all the way up to 10,000 for building, impairing, maintenance, and anything after 10,000 we submit to the state. So our maintenance costs have been, I mean, I don't even recall spending very much money on maintenance. And if we have the money from the legislature, that doesn't matter.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, up to this point, the, the maintenance, up to 10,000.
Mr. Chairman, would there be any to preclude the county from requesting reimbursement of that $27,000 for utilities from the state, aging long-term services or non-matrix triple A? They came down to our meetings and they committed to providing financial assistance as to running these programs. So I mean, by agreeing to the contribution to PMS, certainly wouldn't be guaranteed a reimbursement from the state. But would there be any here that would preclude us from asking non-matrix triple A to reimburse us for those facilities?
I don't think it can hurt to ask.
I don't think it hurts to ask. I do think, Genevieve, you need to answer this question. I do think that in your, in your budget, that you've done, you're including the additional funds that the state said they would provide for the running of the facilities, correct?
What I included in the budget that they requested was the existing dollars that they currently have. And what, how those contracts work is if you want to draw down all the money they say is out there, you have to actually provide a service.
Right.
So you have to provide a service, sell a meal, and then you draw down the $4 for that meal. So they cap, they also cap the service. Even though it costs us $7, $8, $10 to prepare the meal, they will only reimburse us $4 for the meal. That's how the state works. So I haven't, when I say I haven't negotiated with the state, I haven't been able to say, okay, you know, this is what we're going to need to be able to do.
Okay, so this is just based on what's available?
Based on what's available.
Then I actually think maybe we have an opportunity to request that, that might be valid.
We do. So based on the dollars that they gave me from contracts that are out there, the existing dollars that are out there, and I put together a staffing plan similar to what these guys have, making some of those positions that they're piecing together, full-time positions or close to full-time positions, that puts them eligible, all the employees eligible or most of them eligible for benefits under our organization. So the costs do increase a little bit.
A lot.
A lot. And so, so the cost went up. So with the dollars that they gave us, including the 20,000 local dollars, I came up with 139,000 dollar gap in trying to run those programs, to operate those programs.
And so that's what you would negotiate with them?
Yeah. Well, depending on whether you're willing to partner with us, if you're not willing to partner with us, then I'll have a completely different negotiation discussion with them. But I don't know where they're going to go because they're, I think, gone are the days when they just give you money. You have to provide a service in exchange for the money. And so you have a fixed number of seniors in this county that, you know, your population is growing or exploding. So your senior population, there's only so many seniors, so there's only so many meals we can sell. And there's only so many home-delivered services we can provide, or home services we can provide. So we're kind of...
You're a capital one, Genevieve.
Can, I understand that if you take it over, that you can request a higher reimbursement above that $4.
I can try to negotiate one.
But you can put in a request for that evaluation, which I don't know if we've done that in the past. But $4 to me, I mean, that's ridiculous, especially since the delivery cost of the food is so high because we're out moving to nowhere.
Everything costs.
We should be getting the highest reimbursement across the state. And I've been working with Representative Armstrong and Gail Ronalds in trying to figure out some sort of a task force or a work group or somebody that's going to look at how the senior centers are run across the state and try and come up with something that's more simplified. The reimbursement is on non-tribal lands, but on tribal lands, they, they get the full month's off. Beginning of this year, they get that check. And Gail has been asking, why can't you do that for the other seniors and seniors? Why are we just allowing the tribes to get the full amount for their senior program but not for anybody else?
Especially in rural, in rural areas where the population isn't as large. I mean, in Las Cruces or in Albuquerque, you know, they're serving thousands, hundreds of thousands of meals. But we don't have that population base to be able to...
Yeah. And I don't think that Monica and I had this discussion, I don't think they realize that if, if one of the site managers has to go and do an evaluation on a homebound patient and it takes 45 minutes to get there, it takes 45 minutes to get there.
And back.
And back. So you can't, you can't fault that site manager for having to travel 45 minutes to get to somebody's house. And so, you know, there's a whole bunch of things that I think that maybe because we are frontier, can be brought to light with the senior programs, that they might be able to address it and make some changes across the state.
Well, you know, I think working together, we can make that change. If they would give us the funding upfront, like the old days, they used to just give you the dollars and then you utilize them throughout the year. That helps. I have told them that we would need some startup costs because, and so I have asked for certain things, but really haven't sat down to negotiate things. I wanted to come here first. But I think maybe a combined meeting might be helpful, maybe with a representative present. I hate to have a gap in service during that time. So we'll have to see if they can continue to support the services during, until we figure something out.
So in your plan, and I didn't read it in your plan, but I'm just making sure, you don't have fundraising as a part of your basic funding?
No. It's not a guarantee, so I did not include any fundraising dollars.
Thank you.
In my proposal.
Mr. Chairman, what would be helpful and interesting recommendation would be, since the board is interested in partnering with PMS to continue to provide these services, that it provide instruction and direction to staff to work with Ms. O'Brien to visit with the state and for you guys to, at this point, delineate the extent and scope of commitment you all are willing to make at this point for those preliminary discussions with the state. And if you all need to revisit the matter at the next commission meeting, you can do that too, or call special meetings, you can do that too, to at least upfront, say, the extent of the partnership you're willing to...
Well, it is an action item.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that. So if you want to provide staff the direction, you know, initiation, direction to go negotiate with Ms. O'Brien and the state with non-matrix triple A and ALTSD, based on the food levels that we're willing to make now.
Should we move right into that action item and get it over with?
That makes sense.
Have a motion.
Oh, you want, we can do that, sir. Okay.
We're going to have a public hearing, we might as well deal with it.
Absolutely. So, oh, okay. So you're not moving into the PMS thing, you're going to that. You're staying on that?
No, he's moving to action item A since we're already discussing, or actually, action item...
It's action item...
Or action item B.
B. Okay, I think we have, the only reason I'm bringing up, we have a phone call?
Yes.
No, that, but that's for borderlands, right?
That's for borderlands.
Okay, never mind. Excuse me, you're good. Excuse me.
So the best, I think the partnership is a good idea because I think that takes some of the financial burden off of the county as well as Presbyterian Medical. So you're recommending that the motion be that we direct the staff to negotiate with triple A and area agency on aging and Presbyterian Medical? And then if we have to have a special meeting?
That's right. And maybe to provide the instruction that y'all are, whether or not in fact you are willing to continue to allocate $20,000 a year, that you've been out of 16, to 16, you've had corporations. And in light of the legislative preparation to provide for the repairs and maintenance of the facilities, and that we work with the state to see whether or not they're willing and able to pick up the costs of the utilities. So the county doesn't end up picking up the additional $28,000.
The number is 18. They've been given 18,000 for several years now. We cut it back to 9,000 this year because we were worried about money.
So I got to commit to local funds for 16,000.
No, I'm speaking. We're just, you know, I would like to take care of our basic functions in this county. We're worried about Tyler. Sounds like it would be a good program, but we, we're worried about money. It's always money, but we want to spend more money. And I'm really tired of talking about this issue. You know, it's, we've been given 18,000, you know, let's make it 20, no biggie. I'm against going in front. I just, I just think the state needs to step up. If they want to do these programs, they need to step up and do the programs. Quit coming to the counties to bail them out. I'm just tired of that. Everybody comes to the county wanting the county to come up with some money. But when the county goes out there wanting money, nobody wants to give us any. You know, it is. You know, I, I understand where you are. I don't know why you guys are even negotiating. It sounds like you're going a hole.
If it helps. You know, I just pay my taxes every month and have to sit on it all year long.
So let's, let's make a motion. I don't want to talk about, I'm tired of talking about seniors. Senior, we've been at this for a year. I thought we voted to stay out of this mess and now we're fixing to get back in it. Do I have a motion?
When did we vote to stay out of it?
Last meeting. We weren't going to take this mess. We were going to stay out of this mess. Isn't that what we voted to do? We voted to let them have it.
I don't think the same program is presented. So I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we encourage the staff to visit with the state and do exactly what Mr. Petos said and bring this back to us next meeting because I, for one, you know, over some of the other programs that we have in this county and some of the other things that go on, I get a number here, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sorry you're having to hear me talk about this some more.
No, it's all right.
But I see a number of about 42,863 if the county jumps into this. Is that correct? Is that about, we're talking about the $16,000.
Plus the 18,000.
Cliff says it's 18,000. And then, and then we need another...
Some of us can go look at what we've done.
Another 27,000 and 853 dollars. Is that what, would be our part to pay down to the bottom of this letter?
According to the latest.
Yes.
Okay. And Anita is talking to Gail and Gabe, and the possibilities of finding some avenues to fund that part of it, is a possibility?
I guess.
Okay. So I make the motion that you were asking.
I would second that.
We have a motion.
Aye.
To direct the staff. You do what now? Who's next? Dave, would you repeat what you said, please?
Sir, Chairman, so it was to continue to allocate the 20,000 in cash. But again, that's subject to the amount the board wants to agree to, whether it's 18 or 16 or 20. So we'll need a number from the board with respect to whether or not it's 16, 18, or 20. That I understand from Bill that we have the legislative preparation to cover the maintenance and operations, or the maintenance of the facilities. So $40,000 per facility would change these...
Well, no, that's, that's not part of the motion. That's a separate thing.
No.
Yeah, we have that.
So I'm saying that we understand that we have those, that $20,000 there for the three facilities. So therefore, the board is in a position where we can consider to approve paying 100% of facility repairs and maintenance. And with respect to utilities, that we negotiate with PMS and non-matrix triple A and Aging Long-Term Services Division with respect to the state picking up the cost of the utilities. And that if there's a, if there's, if that doesn't work out, then we come back to this county, we come back to the board and see whether or not the board's willing to pick up the additional cost. So that way, the net cost to the county of this motion should not be more than what we're already committing to do, or we've already committed to do, which is that 16,000, the, our obligation to maintain these facilities, extra county-owned facilities, and having the state look at the cost of utilities. So...
Have we got that?
It's recorded. Nice, I can hear that.
But we still need a number, 16, 18, or 20?
20.
Oh. To begin with, I saw you guys had a agreement of local funds of 16,000 even. That was what you guys signed up on?
For each side.
Yes.
So I retract my 20 and say 16.
Thank you.
I can do that.
Yeah, I have a motion in the section, Alvin.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Stick your head. You all take a seat. Blood plate.
Excuse me, the minute's back and word is...
Thank you, George.
Master Sergeant.
She scared me.
Blood plate, dear.
So I received a phone call from a builder in Pyattown that they said, they tried to get a building permit because they're in the process of building a house for a customer. And the state regulation and licensing division told them that they need to have the county sign off on the floodplain. So they called and were told that the county doesn't participate in it. So she called back to the regulation division and they said, no, Katrin County has an emergency manager. He needs to sign off on it based on the floodplain policy and protocol. We don't have one. So how, they can't continue building if our emergency manager doesn't have a floodplain plan for the county to sign off on. And if he signs off on it, the guy's house floods. The county's liable because we don't have a plan or a plain, flood map.
If I, maybe I could add to that, Mr. Chairman. Basically, the way the floodplain coordinator and the floodplain map works is that FEMA, it's FEMA's responsibility to come in and to audit and to create a floodplain map of the county. They are greatly behind on it. In Socorro, they were working on it for basically 20 years and finally got it done maybe two years ago for the county of Socorro. And they didn't do the entire area. So basically, what happens is, what, in order for us to have floodplain management, FEMA has to complete the floodplain maps for Katrin County, which they have not done. So at this point, we, we do not have the ability to sign off on. So what ultimately needs to happen... needs to happen is, you know, the delegate, whoever is delegated to do that, whether it be the manager or the emergency manager, when they sign off on this application, there are, you know, there are several different places on the app, one of them says, you know, planning and zoning application, we don't have zoning in this county, so you write, not applicable for county manager. Same thing with, for, you know, if you sign off on one of these permits, you would then put, same thing, no, no current floodplain maps, not applicable, and that's how you would have to proceed until we receive our floodplain maps from FEMA. And I think probably that's something we could follow up on to, you know, are you guys ever going to get our floodplain maps completed? They, they, they probably do have certain areas of the county mapped, but they certainly don't have the entire thing.
So the emergency manager can start contacting FEMA and start, start getting involved?
Certainly could ask them to do that, and then once we have, once we're presented with our floodplain maps, then we can have a floodplain office, we can even, you know, and if, we can either ask, you know, a certified flood, certified floodplain manager in Katrin, I mean, in Socorro County or Sebelah County to, you know, to, to assist until we have a certified manager here. But in, unless the maps are completed, there's really nothing for them to do, so I think we have to write non-app, on, on permits and, and request that they, you know, they submit the permits to the county, but the counties can then sign off, you know, no floodplain maps available.
Do we have to put an attached letter or, or anything to it, or?
I think you can just fill out the form.
Okay, and so.
So they're pushing in the zoning stuff?
No, they, they, they're just used to, they're just used to, you know, they, they don't want, they, you know, you shouldn't build on a floodplain, but you have to recognize a floodplain for a certified floodplain manager who can only do that based on those maps, which as far as I know at this point, do not exist for the county of Katrin County.
Okay, so, and, so I can fill that up, or does the emergency manager?
Either, either one, that's up to the, the board.
I think the emergency manager can do that for me.
That would be just fine.
Yes, sometime, Mr. Chairman, this was brought before, I think, just before Anita come on as commissioner, we sent a gentleman named Clint Wallace to their, to their school to become emergency met, or floodplain certified. And he felt like after he got through the school, that it was more of a job and more to it than just, so the position is going to have to be built by somebody, you know, a full-time employee.
Does Socorro County have a floodplain manager, or is that grouped in with emergency management?
They, currently, Socorro County does have a person who has double duties, they're, they're currently their mapper in Socorro County. Gail Tripp is a certified floodplain manager and, as well as a mapper, so she does double duties, but that is one of them.
So, and she works out the assessor's office?
Uh, no, she works out, actually, she works out, as Commissioner Hans said, she works out the emergency manager office in Socorro. But that's, there's no set, there's no set rules, I mean, there's an independent office in Valencia County, you know, depends on like, how the county sets it up.
Okay.
But coming out of emergency management is fairly typical.
I, I will get hold of the builder and have them contact Mr. Schreiber, and we'll do that.
Okay, we have a public hearing. Public hearing on ordinance 03, 2019, Katrin County jurisdiction and constitutional protection ordinance.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask Steve to maybe discuss this a little bit. He's drafted, he's the architect of the ordinance, post-ordinance, and have a discussion about what it's about in the public.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna have to set this up to where I can talk and be on film. Let me see me. Okay, I'm on. The ordinance is, is basically something that I ran onto when I first started studying Katrin County. And I realized, you know, that, that a whole lot of the problems endemic to Katrin County have the same genesis, the same root, and that root always goes back to regulations. The, the timber industry was regulated out of business, the ranching industry, farming industry, the mining industry have all been regulated out of business. And all of the regulations, as I looked them up, you know, because they always say pursuant to, and when you look up the pursuant to, you oftentimes find that these are simply policies. And in 1871, as part of the Reconstruction era, they discovered that, that carpetbaggers and politicians were infiltrating the South, and rather than legislating actual law, they implemented policies under color of law. Now, color of law is, is a wonderful term, it sounds so, so colorful, but what it actually means is that it's not law, it is a semblance of a law, and it is only incumbent upon the people in that organization to obey that policy. Anybody outside of the federal government does not have to obey the federal government's policies. They can simply say, no, I don't think I'm gonna do that. And in the 1990s, our Katrin County Board of Commissioners introduced two bills that, brought in the anti-Couplex Klan laws, the anti-carpetbagger laws, they called them the civil rights laws. And they said, anytime that people, two or more, go in disguise, by in disguise meaning that, that they, they are assuming they're, they're exuding authority that they do not have, they're saying, you know, I'm the law, when actually they're not, they're only policy enforcers. So these laws that they brought into Katrin County ordinance number 00190 and 00190 amended and 00190, it, it's all in the back of your, uh, uh, ordinances. Does everybody have an ordinance that wants one? Well, I better pass out some ordinances then, because otherwise, it's going to be difficult to understand where I'm going here. Where'd you pass this about? So in, in the very back three pages are the original ordinances that the county commissioners in the 90s passed, and these were emergency ordinances. They, they were designed to stop the onslaught of federal agencies on the economy of Katrin County. And they included 18 USC 241 and 242. Now, this is criminal, chapter 18 is the Criminal Code. And they said, whenever two or more go in disguise upon the highways or upon the premises of another with the intent to deprive any citizen of the United States of rights secured by this Constitution, they are liable to the person that they're trying to deprive of their rights and privileges in a suit of law, suit of inequity, or redress of grievance. So all of those things were provided back in the 90s. But subsequently to that, a lot of people got tied up in, in the, the federal legislation. I've read Hubie McKean's book, Justice for All, What a Laugh, and, and it's, it's not a funny story, it's a very sad story, but it's one that, that the commissioners well understand because they deal with this every day, that if, if you're drug into federal court, then you have no hope of winning, there is no hope of winning. So although these, these ordinances in the 90s were spot on, absolutely spot on, it addressed the, the problem at, at the time, and it, it prepared solutions for it, but there's two things that it left out. The, the primary one is enforcement. See, they, they had no enforcement in the 1990s, there was no way to take these people to court in Katrin County. So the first thing that, that I wanted to do in this ordinance is to provide a venue and a jurisdiction to, to litigate the problems that people are having in Katrin County against state and federal actors. And now the corporations have joined in, the, the corporations are causing as much trouble as the governments are now because they're very well-funded and they have an agenda that's not friendly to Katrin County. So what appeared to me to be the, the appropriate solution was to bring the jurisdiction and venue here. So when somebody like Hubie McKean has a problem with the, the feds reducing his grazing allotment, or changing this, or that, or, or the water, or whatever, he simply files suit against them in Katrin County Court, and our Sterling Sheriff Ian goes and serves the papers, and a grand jury of local people is convened by Adrian, or Dave, or Kathy, and they investigate. Then comes the trial, and the trial is a jury trial, we go back to common law in this, in this particular county, although not completely, there is still going to be a bifurcated county because the district court is over here and that sets an admiralty jurisdiction. But we can go into a common law jurisdiction and have a jury, and our jury decides. And that takes it completely out of the state and federal venues, jurisdictions, and places the power where it should be, with the people. Now, I would never have thought of this if not for the inauguration, inauguration address in, for Donald Trump. And he said, this is a different day. I'm not taking power from the Obama administration and passing it to the Trump administration. I'm taking power from Washington DC and giving it back to the people. That was what he said. And on katrincountynews.org, down at the bottom of every page, there is the president on a video saying that, for anybody that may question it. And then, at the second part of that, he also determined that it was regulations that had killed the entire economy of this country. So he said, I am going to deregulate. And the second part of that video shows reams and tomes of, of laws, quote, color of law, color of law, huge pallets of it stacked all the way up to the ceiling eight feet high. And then he shows a little pack over on the side from 1960. And you see this huge burgeoning of rules, regulations, where do they come from? They come from executive orders and, and policymakers. And interestingly enough, when I started studying how we got some of the bad laws here in New Mexico, Gail Armstrong turned me on to a gentleman that explained to me, well, no, the, the legislators don't write these laws, they're written by bill writers. And I said, well, what's, what's the qualification for bill writers? And Ryan said, well, there are none. You know, they just write the bills and, and the politicians push them through. So the, the, there's, there's nothing that we can do outside of our county, but there is a whole lot that we can do inside of our county, and that's what this ordinance is about. It, it takes, it takes Ian's position to a, a little higher light, because Ian is the protector of the county, he is the chief executive officer of the county, and Ian can decide what laws he's going to find enforceable and what laws he's not. But if Ian had a posse, and according to the state constitution and the federal constitution, each county should have a militia. If Ian had a posse and a militia for free, the commissioners wouldn't have to be digging for money so often, for one thing. But we would also have an immediate enforcement of our ordinances, all of our ordinances. And you notice in here, I, I say in the very beginning, that all of the ordinances are contained herein. Like, uh, every ordinance that, that we've written is now under the purview of this one ordinance for enforcement. So that's, that's, and, and there are always dangers inherent in any change. But as the Declaration of Independence stated, that people are generally more willing to put up with evils while they are sufferable than to write them and to change them. And, and this is a very difficult thing. So I've added in this new version, and I don't think the, the board has the new version, although I sent it to him by email last night. Okay, there's, there's a, a, there is a, would you, I'm sure House moves along. There is a new paragraph, paragraph 10. After what Chairman Anita and, and Chairman Bucky and, and Chairman Cliff said last, last time we mentioned this, they, they brought up the, the economic impact that we're going to have in making this transition, and that is a very real concern. So I, I think that it probably would be wisest to very carefully plan this implementation, that's why I call it implementation. It's on page five, number 10. And there's, there's a lot of people who, who live and work here that work for the state or the federal government, and I think that some of them will want to stay. And I believe that some of them are actually performing duties that would be of value to the county even if there were no federal government. It would still be things that we wanted to do. So I, I put in a, a section there where they might apply to the board for assistance, maybe starting their own business that would be of value to the county. But there's, there's a, there's a whole lot of pitfalls, and I'm not one to worry much about that, but I'm glad that others do. Adrian, would you, would you mind taking over?
With permission, Mr. Chairman, certainly, I, and I, Steve and I have talked about this, and I, you know, I certainly, I greatly applaud his, you know, his bringing this forward and discussing these issues because there's some, you know, really important issues that we do deal with all the time. And, you know, I very much agree with, with quite a bit of his, you know, his introduction to the ordinance and his, his recitation of constitutional and common law. I think it's right, I think that, you know, and it, and it follows very, you know, follows a logical pattern, and I, I definitely agree with it. He asked me to shoot holes in it, and the holes are not in his, in, you know, in the logic or his original, or his, you know, or his original recitation of, you know, of laws in this country. Where we end up with an issue is that, you know, our courts, you know, in New, in New Mexico especially, I'll just deal with that right now, in, you know, and specifically, you know, there's a case that synthesizes it all, which is, which is Board of County Commissioners of Rio Arriba County trying this versus Grecian. And basically, what they basically have said is, counties cannot have their own courts or original jurisdiction. Now, that definitely, that definitely goes against, I think, with some of our very founding principles in this country, however, you know, that is, that is what we're up against, not just the federal government, but the state of New Mexico saying, guess what, guys, you cannot, you can't do that, you don't have that authority. And this would be a, you know, this would be a, this would be a jump, you know, quite a leap, as, as Steve pointed out, to, to implement something like this, basically because we'd be telling them, you guys are, you know, courts, you guys are wrong, and that's the last thing a court likes to ever hear. You guys are wrong, we do have an original jurisdiction, and we're going to exercise that. We do have an original jurisdiction, and we're going to exercise that." So while there's great discussion points, I'm not sure that we're, as a county, are in the position right now to make that leap. But there are... I appreciate a lot of it.
Mr. Chairman, I can also add, I'll shoot some holes as well. So when y'all are sworn in and you take oath of office, I pulled the Constitution of the United States and the constitutional law of the state of New Mexico. Part of that, we have this privacy clause in the United States Constitution that establishes US Constitution as the supreme law of land. This ordinance requires courts to rescind and absolve the county's consent to be governed by any corporate quasi-governmental entities, including an element of the United States and all departments, branches, bureaus, and agencies in the state of New Mexico. So I would then question whether or not that would then violate the terms of oath of office and might provide a basis for removal for malfeasance, misfeasance in office.
Well, and that's exactly the whole point. I mean, Steve's point certainly is that, okay, what they have then created is not based on what the original constitution and the original constitution of the state of New Mexico is, so you're not violating your oath of office. But I will tell you this, that's going to be a fight that's going to happen, and we'll subject the entire county and all of us to those removal provisions. So that's a big jump, and I think it's important to talk about. I'm not sure we're there yet. That's all I... I would also, Mr. Chairman, ask that, certainly this is a public hearing at this point, so if anyone else would like to discuss it, this is...
Well, I believe that in the Constitution and the state, everybody, and they were writing all these statutes and ordinances and whatnot, I want to see a law by Congress. And I would also like to see that our state constitution is honored and held up. I concede problems with it as far as an initial jump. Maybe it needs more discussion in time, but I'm a patriot, and that's a bad word anymore, but I'll stand up to it. It's up to you folks, and you folks.
Well, it's not up to anyone. Now, it's a discussion.
Right, a discussion. Well, that's what I... The final decision is up to the...
Anybody else?
I have a question. So when it was tried before in another county, was it pursuant, like, up the judiciary chain? Like, did it make it to the state Supreme Court?
Yes, and the Supreme Court said no.
Oh, okay. And then, because it was, was it not then eligible to be bumped up to the federal court?
Correct. It was considered that that particular one that I'm discussing was not deemed a federal question, so that's why.
Okay, so as far as New Mexico state law is, it's case closed?
According to the New Mexico Supreme Court. And of course, that's what Steve is calling into question, debating, but according to what the Supreme Court says, yes.
I wonder if I could bow in on that one real quick. I don't remember the exact site, but it is... Why, this is hard. It is in the very first page there. The new law enacted that is repugnant to the Constitution is void appenatio. And Adrian can probably give you the chapter and verse on that. But a lot of the problems that we have is judicial activism. You know, the judiciary was never designed to make laws. And during this one, I think it was Erie versus the Railroad, they took on the right of judicial examination. And this is a right that they don't have. See, not only the Tenth Amendment to the US Constitution, but I believe the Section 23 of the New Mexico Constitution forbids government from taking upon themselves any unenumerated rights, anything that they weren't specifically given by the people. They are forbidden. And the right of judicial review falls to a jury, always has. This is where the long history of jury nullification comes in. So although these so-called decisions have been made, they are all easily challenged on the face of constitutionality. See, because you look at the original ordinance, back on page number eight, they quote Section 245 of the UCC that also gives the counties and municipalities the right to form their own governments. See, this is embedded in all of their laws. See, there cannot be a law without a remedy. Anybody that is damaged by a law has to have an escape valve. So virtually every actual law that's made has these escape valves, and this is one of them. You know, we do have the authority to institute local government as we desire. Now, this is also in the New Mexico Constitution in two different places, that all power is vested in the people, not in the Supreme Court. Although this sounds good, you know, I mean, it sounds very foreboding, you know, that there would be a, "Oh, a Supreme Court decision." But it's actually irrelevant to what we're doing. Now, Anita also said something last time about the Attorney General didn't sit on somebody for almost the same thing. And then, of course, Chairman Cliff was threatened to go to jail. But in the last meeting, he said that he would be willing to pass this and risk federal jail if the people were on board. Now, I don't know that... Has this actually been published in a newspaper for review? I haven't seen it yet. Perhaps we're premature. Has it come out?
It has.
Okay. In Courier?
I believe... I don't know. I lost. I don't know.
I don't think it was out in the Courier.
It was either the Albuquerque Journal or the Defense of Chief.
Oh, okay. So I haven't heard anything about that.
I would think, well, I would think that your next step is probably to pass out petitions in the county and see if you can get a groundswell of support. Because it was talked about, and we don't have very many people showing up right now.
Right.
So I think that's your next step. The other thing I'd like to step in and say, and I'm sorry to, but I've got to get Gabe out of here and on a plane. And we have a couple of action items.
Well, let's show this to him.
Well, if we could... It's up to Chairman Snyder, but if we can do the Borderlands projects and then come back to this if we need to at this time. Art, do you feel we need more time?
Oh, no, I'll sit down and shut up.
I didn't know I could do that, that easy.
Pause, man.
Mr. Chairman, you might want to shout out to the man off, and hope that he doesn't comment. Any other comments, or closing statements?
We've got a comment. Some years back, I was called in for jury duty. And I went to the interview down there with the lawyer, and they were talking about the case and stuff, and the people that were coming in. And that kind of bothered me. I asked the lawyer, I said, "Where is the decision on the grand jury?" And he said, "Well, we don't do grand juries anymore. So the people are left out, period. They're left out. And the consequences that I have to pay for..." So I've never been asked to go for another jury trial, period. They cut me out just because I want to see this man get a fair trial. Where's the grand jury indictment? If there's no grand jury indictment, there's no jury.
Takes too much time.
And I have to agree with Art 100%. We need to go back. We need to step back in all this laws they're dumping on our shoulders, you know. And how do we deal with it? We can't deal with it anymore. You get stopped by a state policeman here. We don't get a trial here or hearing here. You know, you might have traffic court. If you write your ticket, he'll haul you off to Socorro, you know. That's not right. I want to be judged by my peers, you know.
All right, we'll go to Borderlands Wind Farm. And then we'll come back to this. Consideration of approval of Borderlands' participation in percentage of funding shared with Comoto School District.
Mr. Chairman, Borderlands attorney Catherine McKinnney has requested to be able or be permitted to participate by means of conference telephone. I believe Joyce is going to call, right?
All right. While she's calling, you can act on this one if you want.
Well, so let me give a little bit of background on which one.
Whatever clip wants to be.
So, well, number one, I want to thank Gabe for coming, Mr. Henry, coming back out and visiting with us about this resolution. We have two resolutions here for consideration by the board, one being the distribution of the proposed payment lieu taxes that's been offered by Borderlands. The second issue is going to be, or the second resolution is the inducement resolution that Ms. McKinnney's prepared. With respect to this project, we've discussed it before. It's a wind project, and it falls within the district of the Comoto Independent School District Number Two. With respect to the amount they propose, they have virtually proposed a $3,000...
Catherine?
Yes, this is Catron County. Can you hold for just a moment, please?
Absolutely.
So Borderlands had initially proposed a $3,000 megawatt payment lieu taxes. This land that they're proposing to develop this facility on is 90%, as I understand, on federal land, 10% otherwise subject to taxation. So the county has not presently been receiving taxes, other than the help we receive from the feds, for the 90% of the project that's proposed to be on federal land. So what they're proposing here is a 100-megawatt facility. They originally proposed 3,000 megawatt. They've increased that about 7% to $3,200 a megawatt, which will result in $320,000 approximately coming to the county slash school district. As part of the obligations, we have an obligation if we're moving forward with the issuance of the $200 million in IRBs, which really just involves the county taking their legal title for the facility so that they get a property tax abatement, and we get that help payment in lieu of that property tax that otherwise might have been paid if this weren't on federal land. So this is a financial, a substantial financial gain to the county and to the schools, both of which I understand to be needy. When we visited with Gabe earlier regarding this project, we've discussed what the impact would be to schools and to the county. The schools, I understand that they're going to be a minimal impact, potentially, you know, based on any full-time residents that come in and bring children. That'll place a burden on the school system. With respect to the county, the county's going to have some road name and its obligations. Again, the county's the one that's obligated to issue the $200 million in debt for revenue bonds and to do the paperwork and otherwise get this product moving forward in conjunction with Borderlands. So it's for this board to determine what sort of distribution it would like to pose to the schools, and that's what you have before you is the first resolution. Can I turn that over to Gabe?
Yes, thanks, Dave. Good morning, Gabe McKinnney, I'm from Exterra. I represent the Borderlands Wind Project. I was here last month, gave you guys a presentation of our project. Since then, we've been talking with County Manager Green and Superintendent Mr. Lackey about the IRB. And so I'm really here today just to answer any questions you guys might have. As Dave mentioned, our original offer was $3,000 per megawatt, which would be $300,000 a year. If you look at the current IRB standard in the state of New Mexico for wind projects, I have 12 that I have pulled from public record. It's about $2,300 per megawatt since 2006 through 2017. That trend continues to go down. So I think we've put our best foot forward here at $3,200 after hearing all the struggles today with the budgets and whatnot. You know, I hope you guys see the value in this offer. And yeah, if you have any questions, I'm happy to...
I have one. It's 100-megawatt potential. Will it produce that, or will it produce half of that?
So obviously, it's a natural resource wind. We don't control the... But we have studied the resource for a couple of years now out there, so we have a pretty good idea of what kind of generation we'll get. We're actually overbuilding the wind farm a little bit because the math doesn't work out perfectly. The turbines are like 2.82 or 3.03. When you multiply it up, you get, you know, maybe 100 point... So it's actually 99.1 is our contract to sell the power, but we'll have a little bit over 100. I mean, our financial analysis is that we'll produce, you know, quite often. We have guarantees with our contract that we have to push so much power to the grid. So, you know, it's in our best interest to do all the studies to make sure we can meet our contractual obligations, which we're pretty comfortable about. But the highest wind site in the country, which is probably the Midwest, has a capacity factor of 50%. That means, let's say it's a 100-megawatt site, of the 8,760 hours in a year, 24/7, seven days a week, 50% of the time, you're going to be at full output for that plant. That's the best site in the country, maybe a little higher than 50. Here, we're lower than that. We're at altitude, which actually surprisingly hurts you because the air's a little thinner. And we're probably looking at 30% of the year at full output. But, you know, every day, there'll be something. It's 18,000 acres. Wind can shift across that, and you might see a handful of turbines over here spinning and some over here not. So 30% of...
30% of the year, it'll be at...
Full output.
Full output, and the rest of the time, it's...
There'd be days where there's no output. But on an annual, you know, our contract is based annually, so we have annual guarantees. And so we're pretty comfortable, based on the resource data we've collected.
So the funding coming to the schools and the county is guaranteed?
Oh, yeah. The IRB is irrelevant to the power produced. If we enter into this agreement, it's nameplate. It doesn't matter how much the project produces. It'll be based on 99 or...
I didn't know.
99.1. So, yeah, you still get paid even if we don't make power.
So it's $3,200 per megawatt. That'd be 99 per year.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. McKinnney's joined us, and we might want to give her an opportunity to add anything that she might have, either the inducement resolution or the distribution assumption.
Courier?
This is Catherine McKinnney from Module.
Catherine, can you hear us?
Yes, good morning. Good morning. There's really not much that I have to add, but really, the beginning of the process will be coming back to the county commission with a bond ordinance and forms of the bond documents constituting the transaction as it moves forward. This is just really the beginning. And starting the notice process to all the property tax jurisdictions and allowing the publication of the notice of intent to adopt the ordinance. It also allows the company to begin making purchases as agents for the county for equipment for the project.
So this is one of the financial aspects of the project that we need certainty on to, you know, to get everything to go through our management approval. to go through our management approvals to spend the $200 million. Someone mentioned earlier, we're out in the middle of nowhere. And this is one of the most expensive projects that we'll build for two reasons. There's a huge build in 2020 because the federal PTC tax credits are rolling off. And it's going to be the largest wind energy build in the history of North America in 2020. And so, resources are strapped. Cranes are hard to come by. And the fact that we're out in the middle of nowhere doesn't help. All the bids from contractors coming back are 30, 40% higher than some of our other projects that we're looking at in the same year. And this is one of the only areas of financial influence, I guess, we can impose on the project. So, just leave you with that.
Questions? Mr. Green, do you have any citizens or any objections to this document on record?
Yes, I have received three letters. Two of them are form letter that are the same message but from different addresses. And I received one of them. They both, they all three come from the Semarong Ranch. And I will, I will say that the ranchers involved, I have spoken to them and they are in support of this.
So, it's 10% of it's going to be on their property. And they're going to get?
Well, only one of them, actually. There's three ranchers involved. They, there's one turbine on one rancher. The other ranchers will be participating, but they won't actually have equipment on their land. It'll be on BLM. But it's within the framework of their ranches. And so, they will be compensated somehow. Did I say that right?
Correct.
And the power that you generate goes to, goes on the TEP grid and goes to somewhere?
So, it's the line, yes. So, we're injecting the power on the TEP double circuit 345-kV line between Greenlee and Springerville. Electrons are like water. If you put a, you have a big bucket of water or a swimming pool and you drop a bucket in there of more water, it's kind of hard to determine where that water went. Did it go that way, that way? Electrons are exact same thing. So, while we're selling the power to TEP, Socorro Electric actually buys the co-op, buys power from Springerville and pulls it back. So, you know, I, I think that while TEP's paying us, I think a lot of the power generated will still go back to Katron County residents.
Do we need two different motions here?
Yes. So, the first, the first motion is going to relate to the distribution of the help payment that Borderlands is proposing to pay, that approximately $320,000 a year. So, with the school. So, I mean, it's just a percentage. What you're proposing, the county's going to take what you're proposing the school will take. The school line transfer is going to be meeting on Tuesday. And I hope I don't be underpaid for them to consider that, that distribution.
I've been talking with some of the school board members. We've gone back and forth over and over on this. And the school does have some structural needs to the buildings. There are some areas that we could definitely use the money. And I would propose 64, 60% to the county, 40% to the school for five years. And then it drops to 70, 30 with 70% to the county after they've had the opportunity to do their structural improvements. And I, the school board members that I've talked to seem to be okay with that.
Excuse me?
Can I ask you a question? How many children do we have in the school here? For more?
In Comato?
No, here in Reserve.
Reserve is not in the board.
It will be affected.
Okay, got it.
Mr. Chairman, I think we might have the board to hear directly from Gabe as to what he projects the, the impact this project will have on the school in terms of how many full-time employees we're going to have and the potential, you know, impact on the school.
So, during construction, which will be brief, five months, five to six months typically for a project this size, you know, there'll be up to, upwards of 200 folks. But after we, so that's a huge boost in the economy. We, I'm wearing my Roswell, New Mexico shirt, which is the largest solar project in the state of New Mexico that we built in 2017 down in Roswell. And they saw just a tremendous pop economically throughout the entire county during construction. But full-time employees that only, with technology and automation, we have five people that will be running this plant. They do tend to live very close to the projects because oftentimes they have to be there quickly to respond, maybe in the middle of the night. So, they're incentivized to live close. They tend to be young, 25 to 35 is an average wind tech age. And then there'll be a site manager. Those will have children, I presume. So, that's a benefit to the school. But I think I said this earlier, we're not like a 200-unit apartment complex that we're going to flood and put a huge financial burden on the school district, on water, sewer, roads, police, fire. They kind of just sit there and do their thing with the five people becoming, you know, residents to operate for the next 30 years.
Potentially, you might have 10 kids at the most.
Well, I don't want to rain on anybody's parade, but Springerville's closer to it than I want it to be.
Yeah.
That's what happened. Some of these negative things.
So, Mr. Chairman, from this conversation, what I understood previously from Mr. Henning is that the impacts of the school should be nominal.
Yeah. We've seen that on a lot of our projects.
I'd like to read his proposal. Is that returns, is that something we can do after five years?
I've put it in there. Mr. Henning, do you have any objection to that sort of the distribution?
No, like I said, the first time I came here, that we we focus on the total contribution and we tend to not be involved in the split. But I've seen many IRBs in the state split up different years like that percentages.
We can, we do it so.
I don't want you to take this personal, Gabe. I know you've worked really hard. I know you've come here a lot. But I'm one of those guys. And I think it's a screaming and beautiful death of all of us. I think the cops are going to get so big, they're going to. The other thing I don't like is the way you kill all of my written birds. I'm not an environmentalist, hate most of those groups. Think they're the most full of people in the world. Because they don't do any of this. So, if I vote for this, I'm going to pack that with me all the time. And I know our children need it. I know our county needs the money, you know? So, what do you do? I don't believe in the problem. I don't believe you're going to replace coal and cheap. I think it's the cleanest power there is. And I think we're being punished because of other countries on other continents that don't allow it, that don't. But I admire it. I know that your technology probably someday will be able to opt better. And y'all really need my work. Maybe I'll be lucky if we did, but.
Can I help you out a little?
Just don't bring solar. I'm not a fan of solar. I mean, I can, I can tolerate wind farms because it doesn't take away from the multi-use on the federal land.
That is a distinction.
But you get solar in there and that multi-use land is now we can win. One year.
You're right.
So, I don't like solar. I'll fight you on that one.
Okay, so we need a motion to the distribution.
Yes.
I move to 60, 40. 60% going to the county, 40% to the schools for the first five years. And then after five years, 70, 30, or negotiate with that time. No, I won't throw the negotiating numbers in now. 70, 30 after five years.
All seconded. Got a motion? Split potential money, 60% to the county, 40% to the school for five years. And then it would go to 70, 30. It would be negotiated at that time, no?
No, not negotiated.
Then it'll go to 70, 30. 70 to the county, 30 to the school after five years. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we need to go to another.
The inducement resolution.
Are we even going to dissipate?
Yes, now that you've agreed, now that you've proposed. Actually, we probably had those backwards, didn't we?
Well, that's what I was thinking.
I would, I would say, Mr. Chairman, that since we agreed on that, that the inducement should be slimmed down.
So, what, what do we got to?
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is expressing our intent to move forward with this project to go forward with the notice publication. And then we'll go ahead and have the draft IRB ordinance before the board likely at its next commission meeting.
I move that we move forward with this. You know, I understand Bucky's sin was, I tend to agree with his sin. But we've got somebody going to build a project here and we're going to participate in the funding.
That's an extra for the 60, 40. It's an extra $192,000 for the county and $128,000 for the school.
Yeah.
That's the money that we didn't have. I mean, I hate to sound like a greedy politician, but a greedy politician, I want to point out the financial gain we're going to get.
And my, the way I look at it, if they don't build it here, they're going to build it somewhere.
So, we started the development of this in Apache County. We had another site in 2017, just so you all are all aware, full disclosure. It had some more cultural issues with Zuni Quetlo at the time. And so, we abandoned that site. We still kind of keep it in play now as a backup plan. But I'd like to certainly stay in Katron County. But that is a possibility if we couldn't work things out here.
And, I mean, I don't mind looking at the things, but I'm kind of interested in looking at them. A lot of people don't want to see them, but it doesn't sound like you're really going to be able to see them unless you go pretty close.
So, next Wednesday at the Comato High School, we have a public meeting that the BLM's going to host as part of the NEPA process. The draft, Environmental Impact Statement, Draft EIS was published at the end of, or the beginning of August. And so, part of the, talked about regulations. Part of the regulations, they have to have this open meeting. I'd encourage everyone to come. You're going to see some visual simulations that we've taken from key observation points over in Semarong Ranch and other areas that people seem to be concerned about view shed. The closest residence to a wind turbine from the Red Hill area of Semarong Ranch is 4.2 miles, which is pretty extreme distance, meaning that there's national guideline policy, if you will, that you can build them within 14, 1500 feet of a house.
Watch saying the word policy around.
I know. Making sure you get rid of what's far off. I see that. So, you know, just, you'll learn a lot of that at the public meeting.
So, we can agree to do this, but they've still got to finish the EIS process. You could still get killed at the federal level.
It's, at this stage, the Draft EIS is pretty supportive and clean. We've done avoidance of almost every habitat or cultural site out there. I mean, we've moved this, the turbines around 10 times trying to avoid everything and just leave the least impact possible. So, based on our work over the last couple of years, the Draft EIS is pretty positive compared to other ones I've seen. So, we're feeling pretty good. We'll get through the process.
When is the record of decision?
Record of decision, so final EIS is scheduled for March, the first week of March in 2020 with a record of decision in July of 2020.
And the comment period?
So, it's 90 days from when the Draft EIS was published in the federal register, which was the first week of August.
Of this August?
Yes, yes, sir.
And closing in?
Closing of the public comment period, it'd be 90 days after that. I'm, I'm not remembering the exact date it was in the federal. Yeah, probably November 1, you could call it.
My grandfather used to have the saying, "Don't crouch your sheep where you got gates closed." Especially when it comes to EIS. You have a long track that you're in this county and other places. And some of the red flag words you're using, cultural sites over AWSA water, that equates to $75 million to the four lower counties in the region. And we're fighting those groups to the mail.
It's been a very expensive permitting process, that's for sure.
So, how do we word this motion?
If you're, if you're comfortable moving forward, then you move to approve the inducement resolution. That's going to be in consideration.
Move to approve Resolution 015-40.
Motion? All seconded to approve Resolution 015-2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Anything else on that?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine, for joining us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Like Larry, the satellite guy, I actually had to leave early too. Sorry, it was. Chairman already. Commissioner already.
I'll try to block Bucky as you run. And, but if Steve pulls out a gun, you're on your own.
Thank you for coming down here.
Thank you, make sure you're not.
Would you pull out a business card?
Sure.
Carefully, you carefully pull out a business card.
Back away from that business card.
I'll leave a couple.
I'd like to publish your, your meeting up here.
Oh, okay, that's fine, sure. Yeah, it's at the Comato High School.
Well, just, I'll send you an email and you can send me all the officials.
Bill, it should have been published. Well, the BLM published.
Right.
I'm not quite sure where and how they published the meeting.
It's in the Apache, in the WMI Central, because I've seen that. WMICentral.com, you can get on there and the meeting's published.
Oh, okay.
There's an article.
Could you give me some adult supervision finding that?
Sure, yeah, I just saw it a couple of days ago on the website, so it's there.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good rest of your day. Do you want to go back to A? I mean, yeah, to action on A.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Be better. Consideration of approval of Ordinance 03292, Katron County Jurisdictional and Prostitutional Protection Ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I have to start this conversation. Although I agree with what is in that ordinance, I've always been advocate for the sovereign nation of Katron County. However, we're at a point right now, and I even hate to say this, we have the Second Amendment resolution. They line out and bekeel the money to the sheriff's office. We're trying to get an appointment with the Department of Interior in D.C. to help with the root problem that we have in Katron County. And I am afraid if we move forward with this, the federal government's just going to write us off and we're going to be the county if we're not getting to anything. I would have to vote against it or not even recommend it at this time. But that doesn't mean we can't readdress it later.
Yeah, I don't think we're the same people we were at the founding. I think, I think we're all too comfortable. And I don't think we're willing to give up what they gave up. They were willing to give up everything for freedom. They were willing to die, and they were willing to sacrifice themselves for the good of all, for freedom. I think we're too comfortable in this country. I think we're all kinda, yeah, we have some issues, but I don't think we're the same people anymore. Maybe we're gonna get there. If I thought all the people in this county wanted to do something like this, I think I would be more willing to, to talk about it. But I, I just don't see it, you know? I see people complaining, but I don't see people willing to step up and, and do what they need to do.
When you, when you get to the point where you rely on federal funds, which, you know, they've taken so much away from the county, and they insult us by offering these measly pill payments, and then all of a sudden you don't have it, I don't think our population would be too thrilled with not having a road light in, having very minimal services. I think we, at this point, I think we'd shoot ourselves in the throat.
Do you remember the first time we developed the budget, and we left the pill payment out of the budget, and we thought we'd put it in, but we hadn't? And the, the loss of services that we were gonna have was just phenomenal, with just that much. And yet, the pill payment, it, it is pathetic, but we do rely on it, and as long as we rely on this, I do think we have a, we do have a problem. Steve, I, I, I agree with you in a lot of way, a lot of ways. I would think there would need to be revisions before we could get the public onto it, and would visit with you that on a personal scale, not representing the commission if you'd like, but just wanted to say that.
Beautiful.
Give her a few years, Steve. Let him dump some more of those, let him walk through the water, and off the river. And take your water rights, and take your private land. And after that's happened, then come back and revisit this and see if folks are ready to maybe try to stop some of the nonsense going on. Not today, we're not ready for it. I vote, I would vote again.
I'll keep it alive. Thank you, Chairman Bucky.
I'm not the chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bucky!
I'm a little commissioner, I'll tell you what, I almost didn't make this meeting because I was in Walmart, and this guy likes to hear himself talk, come up to me and said that county commissioners have no power, it was foolish to serve and run a county commission. I really wouldn't have liked for him to follow me around the last six and a half years, because he could've saved me, my wife, my family, a lot of everything.
So we actually need a motion?
Or not, I mean, if we don't make a motion, we're dying on the truth. I'm not willing to make it.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion? A petition. I think probably what would make all of you comfortable, and, and I am so thrilled with the, the attitude that you have about this. And I, I agree with you, Chairman, that we're not the same people that we once were. And, and this is constantly a stake in my heart. But I think that slowly but slowly, it's coming back around. And I think if, if we had a month or two to see what we could do about getting petitions signed, getting people a little more aware of how the transition might successfully happen, then, you know, perhaps put it on the agenda for January.
Yeah, we'll work. Write it down, January.
Let it be written, let it be done. The power of the commission.
All right, let's move on to consideration of approval of vehicle purchase for Captain County Commission.
You should have a copy of, of that, that purchase, it's for a, it's for a pickup. The old, the old truck is going to go to solid waste for them to make their runs on, and we'll have a, a small gas for the truck. It's exactly the same truck as the assessors.
You're not gonna give an electric vehicle like ours a purchase?
No.
I used to use stock to even battle for a funding, and I...
A funding for an electric vehicle?
They, all, all of this funding for all of these, our funds legislate, for legislating funding, and, and Ms. Armstrong did contact me and say, you know, she was, she's worried about this money not being spent, and I told her it's gonna be taken care of, don't worry. So all of these purchases from item E to item I are dealing with funds from legislative funds.
Move to approve the purchase for a vehicle with Captain County Commission.
Okay.
Motion and a second to approve purchase of vehicle for the commission, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Going up in price. Consideration of approval of vehicle purchase for Captain County Fire Administration.
So what, what we did with, with some of our, some of our funding, in order to stretch it out, Joyce needs a truck, she's got a small vehicle that doesn't get out of all the sites, and we are, are going to pay her ten thousand for what that's worth that she still has, and she's gonna buy a, a truck out of Fire Administration funds. It has, this is not funding that's done from, from the commission.
So that vehicle that she has now will go to?
The commission.
The commission? In addition to the vehicle, to the truck?
Yes.
I keep a mental inventory of...
So the ten thousand from that is out of the...
Yes, it'll be out of that funding too. And she's basically getting the same type of truck, except it has to have a few more bells and whistles on it, because it's still in the fire.
Oh, the graphics, that's the most clear access stuff I've seen out of it. Move to approve the purchase of a vehicle for Fire Action.
Second. Motion and a second, purchase of a vehicle for Fire Administration, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consideration of approval of Apache Creek EMS purchase of ambulance not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand.
It's probably only, it's gonna be closer to two hundred, so we may have to actually come back in the next month or two and figure another purchase amount to spend the whole, to, to spend down the legislative funding. But we've put a cap at two fifty, because we haven't got all of our bids in yet, but it will not be over that, it'll be closer to two.
So the, the legislative money was just for a vehicle, we can't use some of that for maybe a...
No, it can be, it can be used on the fairgrounds.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's more that we can use.
There's some leeway, we'll wish extra, okay, so they can, they can get an ambulance for two hundred thousand, the fifty thousand we can allocate another.
Right, and it's, I, I think it's gonna be closer to two ten, two twenty, right?
I, I'm thinking, okay, the one fifty is from, so correct me if I'm wrong, because I thought that they had a hundred thousand dollars...
That was my next...
They do. Yeah, I thought they had a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, no, the two fifty, I'm sorry, the two fifty includes the money that they have.
They have, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
This comes out of the ambulance fund, right?
Yes, the ambulance fund has a hundred thousand.
It's a hundred from us, but if it uses, if it uses more, it can, it's all lumped together.
Well, the hundred thousand is from, is from...
Legislative appropriation.
No, I thought it was from... The ambulance, the ambulance fund right now has a hundred thousand dollars in it. Apache Creek is going to put in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it shouldn't have anything to do with...
This, G does not have anything to do with the legislative money, G's a separate thing.
Because you guys voted on this before with the, with the ambulance.
Wait, you're, now you're talking Camato? No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about...
No, no, no.
The Camato's already done. We got a...
Camato's is the money?
Yes, and we, we've got another hundred thousand for, for this.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so, so they're both, they're, they're both taken care of, but out of separate years.
Correct, okay, okay, yeah, because we're always thinking, no, that, Camato's is coming out of the ambulance fund.
Right.
A hundred thousand of it is coming out of the ambulance fund, and then the balance is off of the thing, is that right?
No, no, both years, both years, there's a hundred thousand dollars from the legislature for ambulances. Both years.
But...
But, but it was lumped, it was lumped together, it was, it was lumped together with the fairgrounds and, and it's all, it's all lumped from Gabe and Gil.
Okay.
So, so I know that Fire Chief Paulina has pledged money from Apache Creek, so there's still that option to get the money from Apache Creek and maybe use some of that capital. Because they've joined, they can use fire phones to help...
Well, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna use a max of a hundred thousand from us.
And, and...
And they have, and they have, and they've got, they've got a hundred and fifty. If it comes in less, maybe we'll get to give it a little bit more.
So, so no money will go out of the ambulance fund, it'll be from Apache Creek?
Not, not from Apache Creek, not for Apache Creek's money.
But for the, but for the Camato's.
The Camato's will, yeah, Camato's has already been taken care of, that's not...
Yes, it should almost be, I think next month, it's supposed to be ready, I think in September, or October. Yeah, it's supposed to be ready to be delivered.
After all that discussion, I move to approve the Apache Creek EMS and the ambulance not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
All seconded.
Motion and a second.
Seven, sorry?
Apache Creek EMS not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consideration of approval of vehicle for Captain County Sheriff's Department.
This is also a legislative appropriation fund.
I, I know they, they need the vehicles, like, I am not saying that they don't, but I have asked Ian to give me an inventory about their vehicles, because if they got vehicles that aren't running, we don't need them. Fix them, get rid of them, but don't leave them laying there, is my question. And I could be wrong, he may have a reason why he's not getting rid of some of the broken ones, but if we have some sheriff's vehicles that are not running, we don't need to keep them. Trade them in, fix them, give them to another department that can fix some of your money. So he's gonna give me an inventory to see what vehicles run, which ones don't, and where he has them, and what they're used for.
Hopefully, he knows everything's bound.
But other than that, I, um, that was my only concern, is if the sheriff's office has vehicles that aren't running or they're not utilizing, I think they can be utilized in other places in the county. I know Larry was looking for a vehicle to drive to go to these sites that he can't get to. But, you know, I think, I think we need to get a better handle on all the vehicles we have across the county. But that's just, my opinion got off on a little tangent there, but after the tangent, I move to approve the vehicle purchase for the sheriff's office.
All seconded.
Motion and a second. Approve the vehicle purchase for the sheriff's department, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. A consideration of approval to purchase building for Captain County Fairgrounds not to exceed ninety thousand.
It was originally seventy thousand, but we had more money to, to play with in that, and so we increased that to ninety. The reason we did is because the plans that were, that were submitted for this building are two years old, isn't it?
Three.
Three years old, and so we have to get that, we have to get them repriced, and obviously, prices have went up, so...
So is this just to buy, buy a building, or to buy and erect it?
This is to buy and erect it, this is, this is to buy a building and set it up.
That's for the, replace the tent?
Yes, and it was, the original price was around seventy grand for the whole thing, that's what, that's what we were told.
Yes, and it was a Mueller-like building, it was not a Mueller building, so that's why we can go ahead, and that was just for the building, that was not erecting it. But because, if we can go with, with quotes, if we can get one cheaper, which is, we're hoping to get a Mueller building, we can do the building and erect it for that price, with engineered specs.
Because Mueller, isn't that already included in their cost, because they already have the engineers?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, what is, it is an engineer certified, yeah. Move to approve the purchase of building for the county fairgrounds not to exceed ninety thousand.
Second. Motion and a second. Approve the purchase of a building for county fairgrounds not to exceed ninety thousand, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries. Consideration of approval of jail inspection by commission.
I'll put in the expected to jail during the last time you were here, this is just, this is just your confirmation that the jail is being inspected.
Same as always, huh?
I, I know the fans are not, and this is just one more expense to add to the sheriff's office, sorry, Ian, but the fans are not circulating in the, not the sweet area, but the more crowded part, I think it's on the when you walk in, it's on the left-hand side by the kitchen, the fans are not working that good, and they said it gets kinda stuffy in there for the prisoners. Whether it works or not, I'm not sure.
Do we know it?
But we can, there's no prisoners, well, yeah, they do have a few prisoners in there.
Yeah, there's still two.
I still get a little bit... It's just a little bit too, too... I had no problems with the jail inspection, so I move to approve the inspection that we did last month.
Second.
Motion and a second. Approval of jail inspection. No issues other than the fan. Is that way?
It may have been there since you were sheriff, not working.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I just might, so we're, we're doing the inspection pursuant to our statutory responsibility under section thirty-three, three, four. It says that on the site visit, inspection report should be presented regularly to the governing body. It used to be that we had to make biannual inspections and make a report to the district court, a written report. It doesn't say that a written report's required here, just an inspection report, it sounds like we have that for all intents and purposes, I just wanted to clarify that for record, that it will not be a written report that reflects the findings of the board that everything is in order, you know, except for the fans, which we have administration appointed for us. Right, so...
Okay.
I've, I've got a letter for Cliff to sign. Okay, great, thank you, thank you. Sounds good?
I'll look at your comments, though.
This is a approval of a commission letter supporting Pike Town Rising Stars pursuant funding for playground equipment for Jackson Park.
Is this for that grant that they got, that they needed a letter from the county that they can actually put the playground on county property?
Well, actually, they didn't get that grant, and then, but they need the letter to attach to grants that they're applying for, that's what they need. And so, Cliff, if you have problems with that letter, I can definitely reword it before you sign it, not wrong.
I move to approve the letter, unless, um, Chairman Snyder has any corrections, changes?
One second.
Motion in the second to approve the letter supporting. Rising Stars Pursuit Funding for Equipment for Jackson Park, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any questions in the audience? Um, I'm just curious, if, so they're wanting to put in, they're wanting to put in playground, uh, equipment. Who, what, what does that do for liability insurance?
Well, that's what they have to put in, they have to put in equipment that is, that meets standards. Uh, right now, they don't, the equipment they have there doesn't meet standards, therefore, it, it might actually help our liability insurance go down.
Okay. They have the old merry-go-round that was the.
Chose off your legs.
Decapitation machine. They finally got rid of that one, they had seesaws, I think, that were pretty decrepit, so they're trying to.
So they have the swings and the slide left, and, uh, the slide itself wouldn't, won't meet.
Okay, so we're already paying liability insurance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just like you said.
Just checking.
It'll possibly like, um, allow it to go down.
It never goes down.
Thank you.
I'm hoping.
Well, at least maybe it'll keep it from going up the next time they.
Decrease.
Cause you're, you're right.
Yeah, there you go.
That's.
It said decrease the rate of minis, yeah.
Do we wait for back to do that?
I think you guys can do the census project.
Have you found anybody that wants to work on the census?
Nobody's contacted me, but the, I'm not the contact number, I'm just supposed to set up committees to get them to try to.
Well, what I've done when I've talked to people is I, I've just told them, call Bill to get further information, cause I have no idea.
Nobody calls me, you would think there would be some people around here, look at this as an opportunity, I have had not one call.
Uh, Rose has been trying to volunteer for, ever since, uh, you talked to her about it. And, uh, she's waiting on somebody to.
Did she call them and?
Yes, sir.
And they just haven't gotten?
Right, they just haven't gotten back with her yet.
Okay, well, the, the timeframe, this is still, they're not making the phone calls for that, but, um, tell Rose if she'll call me, I will definitely, uh, make sure. And put a list together and, and make sure that they contact them.
Would you prefer that everybody call you?
Yeah, I would like to know, so I can start a list, yeah.
Everybody wants to be on a list.
Yeah.
I'm gonna pause.
A consideration of approval of resolution zero-one-three-twenty-twenty for funding and support. For census project work.
What this does is it allocates thirteen thousand dollars of census funds for us to use for the census, the census project. It's fairly limited in what we can do, but it does, uh, keep the county from having added expenses, so it's a, it is a good thing. We probably can't actually use all the eleven thousand dollars.
What can you use it for?
Well, we can use it for travel to meetings, we can use it for meeting costs and stuff like that. If I have to advertise, we can use it for that, and I think that's what will do the bulk of it, is in advertising.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second to approve resolution zero-one-three-twenty-twenty for funding or support of the census project, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Maybe somebody else can. Okay, consideration and approval of Southwest Water.
Let me print this out, and, uh, if you want to read something that'll put you to sleep, this is pretty good material.
That was passed by, um.
But, uh, it does deal with a necessary water plan.
Yeah, it, it was, it was passed by Interstate Stream Commission in March of two thousand seventeen. The county usually approves the water plan, um, so we can keep it on file, and we never did that, so. It's, the Water Coalition, the San Augustine Water Coalition, had a big part in the, in readings, a lot of the stuff. There were any issues that came up that was concerning, um, they would have brought it to the county. I don't think that there was anything that struck out right away, I don't know if anybody came down, I think Howard was involved with this too, so he took care of the South Pass and.
Um, I didn't, yeah, I sent it to you guys email, um, we can print it out for you, make your book if you want, but I didn't do that. It, this is basically housekeeping, and it's, it's already, it's been in effect for two years, the county just needs to get on board.
Move to approve the Southwest reading of water plan.
One second.
Motion in the second to approve the Southwest. Water plan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Uh, consideration of approval of freeholder meeting dealing with road closure.
Um, the, the one thing, uh, Chairman Snyder, that might be changed is the actual mileage. The, the last, the last person that real, that wants the, um, the, the blade work on the road is, would actually, is. You could cut off more than the one point two miles. The one point two miles goes to the gate of the person who wants it, um, uh, wants to take it off the county road. They're the only ones that are affected by that, so I, I haven't, I don't think there's gonna be any problem with that. But for other people using the road, I would say that we still blade up to the gate myself.
Well, I talked to, to Steve Jensen, because where the three point two miles is right at his house. And I asked him if he used that road very much, and he said he hardly ever uses it. The gentleman that wants the, his property taken off of county maintenance at the gate to the Seablo County line owns a, a road grader. And he's offered it to Jensen to blade that, and when I went out there and looked at it, from Steve Jensen's house. To the gate or to the Seablo County line is not bladed that often. The bar ditches were weeded, weeded up, so I, the only reason why I suggested from Steve Jensen's to the Seablo County line is because. County not bladed anyway, so why have it on the inventory?
Well, you have the, the Browns, uh, the Browns land, which is, um, uh, mostly the Armstrongs use that, and, and. I think we should include them in the process, because that does go on up, uh, to the gate is the finish of their, of their land. The, the owners of the Williamson Ranch, uh, my brother actually leases their land, and Danny does the, uh, Danny Carver has it leased for hunting. And so they're the ones that use, use that, um, mostly, the owners don't live there.
Yeah, and I guess I was just looking at if we took it off the inventory, that's one, that's three point two miles of roads that the county doesn't have to maintain. Because they're probably blading it maybe once a year as it is, or if it gets bad, cause the road was not in good shape when I went in, it was pretty narrow. There was a lot of weed on the side when I went in. But it doesn't matter to, um, Mr. Lee either way. He, and the reason, just so you guys know, the reason why he wants to take it off of county maintenance is he has noticed over the last couple of years that trespassing has got significantly worse. He's found carcasses of elk, elk carcasses with no heads, with just the, the waste left there. Um, and they, and the people that are coming in on him go in on the Armstrongs as well, because it is a county road. It's a county road, anybody can get out and drive on it, so he just wanted to close it off. And it doesn't, he's talked to his neighbors, they're okay with it, um, he has his own blade, he can blade it if it gets bad.
He has half a blade.
Well, who let Buster use it, apparently Buster needs a little bit more training on that blade.
So the owner of the land goes through private?
It's his, it's all his deed at this.
The owner of.
So. So we just have to get a freeholder committee, and the owner can present to them, we'll show them the road, we did this earlier in the year, so. Uh, I just have to get your approval to go through the plan.
Do you have the freeholders in, already?
No, I'm waiting till I get the approval of this, and then I'll set it up.
And so if you would then, the appropriate motion would be to, to, to. Give the authority to the manager to select freeholders, that you're appointing them to view this road?
That is the motion that I'm making.
Have the manager put together a freeholder committee to view this road for closure.
And we'll bring back the recommendation to you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 He did ask that we could expedite this because hunting season's coming up, and he's not, he's, he lives in Jackson. And he, he doesn't have anybody out there to police it, or he would just like to lock it off. I don't know how much we can expedite it.
Actually, he's welcome to lock it off.
Okay, I'll let him know.
Cause if they, if they lock it off, that just, the county then refuses to blade the road because there's a shut gate.
He doesn't have some kind of agreement with human fish, does he?
The game and fish in their roundabout way basically says if you want to kill elk, you have to, or kill wildlife through hunting, you have to open up your gates. But they can't even enforce the trespassing, so I don't even think they're gonna address that issue. I don't even get me started on this trespassing issue with the game.
No, it's already twelve twenty, we don't want that.
They're probably gonna get shot on hunting season.
David, got a consideration of approval of resolution zero-one-one-twenty-twenty budget adjustment and money transferred. For various departments.
You're on, Becky.
Um, basically, if you look at your, uh, the little spreadsheet that I gave you, what this is, is, um. The. You'll see the fifty-eight thousand here that covers.
Looks like this.
Here, this is what it is. According to the DFA and everything, um, we are not allowed, this is grant money, these are things that are being covered by grant money. However, it's grant money that needs to be reimbursed, and until it gets reimbursed, we have to cover that money in that line item. You can't, you can't spend what you don't have. So basically what this is, is to, uh, move money from four oh one into these different line items to cover the grants. So the expenditures can be made against that line item, and then when the reimbursements come back, they go back into four oh one.
So the one twenty-five through the commission office, what grant is that?
That is, um. Twenty-nine thirty-seven, that's a total of the, uh, vehicles.
Vehicles?
Yeah, that's covering like the vehicles, um.
So that's more legislative.
Right, 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 exactly. The, the fifty-eight thousand is basically just to move the fifty-eight thousand from the, um, LEPF fund. It's sitting in there, it's not supposed to sit in there, so we've decided to move it into the corrections fund, and that will give them fifty-eight thousand dollars more to work with. Uh, that's, that's the sheriff, that sheriff's already have that, and we're just moving it. It's theirs already.
The sixty thousand?
The sixty thousand is another grant, the vehicle grant that the sheriff's got.
The legislative?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's what that is.
So, with the library fund, I thought that this grant was mis, misallocated on, or charged to the wrong line item, and that money's actually not there.
Well, here, this is, okay, so, on the, on the library one, there, you did have, um. In the four-two-three-zero-zero, you did have twelve thousand and something dollars, it was sitting there. So it is actual money sitting there. Basically, um. We've got the grant for seven thousand and something odd dollars for the library, so basically what we did, instead of, we were gonna move the whole twelve thousand in, back into four oh one. But what we did was we just subtracted the seven thousand grant, and so you're only putting like five thousand back into four oh one. So, same thing, we have to have money in there to cover it, the reimbursements will go back into four oh one. All these reimbursements on these grants will go back into four oh one. To the general fund, because the general fund is basically funding them until the reimbursements come in.
Okay, I guess on the library one, I'm really confused on it, cause I thought that was already spent, the money has not been spent.
No, not the twelve thousand dollars that was in the four twenty-three, it is, it, it's there, it's there, it has not been spent. It technically needed to go back into four oh one.
Into the general fund?
Into the general fund, so, because it's, it's a Glenwood library line item, uh. The, the expenditures in the past were not allocated correctly, let's just put it that way, so that's what's happened, so that money's set there. So technically, four oh one was paying for it, so that money needed to go back into four oh one, so.
So this five thousand is the difference between.
Right.
Was when out of the general fund that was misalloc, okay, got it.
Right, and what, and what we're having to cover this year until reimbursements come in.
Okay, got it.
Cause according to DFA, we are not allowed to expenditure on a line item that we have nothing in, so we have, so unfortunately, the, uh, general fund has to cover these.
Okay, it makes sense now.
Okay. And the, and the, uh, the ones below that is basically just the budget increase. So now, you know, we approved the money being moved, now I need approval to go in and increase that budget. That budget on the line item, because it wasn't budgeted. Which I would like to also say for the record, uh, DFA has approved our budget, it was approved with no questions asked. So, uh, we're good to go.
Okay, thank you, thank you all for your hard work on that, thank you for the mountain. Move to approve the budget adjustments as presented.
One second.
Motion and second approval of resolution zero-one-one-twenty-twenty budget adjustments, money transferred, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
This will pretty much be the norm going forward, any kind of grants that we get, if they're not, if the grant money isn't upfront, this is pretty much gonna be the norm. So you're gonna see more of this, of me asking permission to move money into another grant to cover the expenses, and then, so, yeah. So we don't violate any DFA rules.
We got a consideration of approval of resolution zero-twelve-twenty-twenty procurement policy changes. What do we change?
So we, uh, the last time we went through this, we failed to do the, um, actual number. So the first part that got changed would be, um, we changed from zero, it was zero to five hundred dollars. We've changed it from zero to fourteen ninety-nine point nine-nine for best obtainable price. We basically already approved that, we just didn't get it into the resolution, I mean, so that's the, so that's what we're doing. The other thing that was changed was the wording on. The wording on page nine, under purchasing rules and regulations. It was basically, they're, they're dealing, the auditors have brought to our attention the wording of the central purchasing, uh, agent, which is me. And if we didn't reword this, that means that everybody hands in their P cards, and I do all the purchasing for every single department. I, I'm not, I'm not down with that. So basically, what we did was we just changed the wording that allows each department to still keep their P card and make small purchases. Staying in accordance with the procurement code and law. This was a, this, this wasn't a finding yet on our audit, but it, it, they, they were talking about it, so I just wanted to get this in place, so when they come back, we can say it's been corrected.
Are you guys still having a problem getting receipts?
Um.
You get mine eventually, I mean.
Yeah.
Talk about it, you'll eventually get mine.
Yeah, um, I'm, uh, it's getting better, just put it that way, it's getting better, the, the process is going a little bit smoother, um. I'm having to go through, there's a transition, because also with the auditors, there's a lot more documentation that has to be given now. And so I'm, I'm, I'm having to deal with that, to try to get it across the board to everybody, that it's not me making up rules, this is what it is, and, you know, so. But I just wanted to wait till after the audit, the closing, cause they're, they're coming back the seventh through the eleventh of October. And I wanted to wait till the closing, and then I was going to, um, put together something of a memo letter or whatever, and send it out to all the fire chiefs and everybody. Letting them know the structure of the change. and send it out to all the fire chiefs and everybody, letting them know the structure of the change.
So you just had to change the wording so they can still use it?
Yes, so we changed the wording so it doesn't fall all on me. I don't have time to buy everybody's stuff. And I don't think they want me in charge of saying what they can buy and what they can't buy. I'd be shocked.
Other than that, it's all pretty much the same.
The same, yes, it is.
Just revisions to make the auditors happy, basically.
Yes, that's what it is, exactly. These are new auditors, and, 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 and I have to say, they are, they're very good at what they do, because they've asked questions that haven't even been asked in the past and everything, so they are, they are good. On some things, I think they're going a little overboard, but that's okay, because, um, it'll all get mired out in the end, but so far, I'm pretty happy with them as auditors.
All right, we have a motion to
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion in the second to approve the changes resolution zero-twelve twenty-two, procurement policy changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Consideration of approval of design grant application for airport
I've got that over here, because we just got, we just got that finished, uh, the finish thing, just recent. If you guys want to look at it, there's copies, there, I just need your approval, I, um, I signed this, but it's just for the design, uh, the design of the, the lighting and improvement, the second stage of improvements at the airport. It's what it is.
Fun in the
It's going to be, it's, it's coming out of a grant. In, the actual project will be in next year, not this year. This is just for the design and engineering. And if I have approval, I'll sign that and send it back to you today.
This for lighting?
The, this phase is for lighting.
Are they going to drag their feet reimbursing like if they're watching? Just
I, I can't, I can't say it.
It was painful to see the money getting transferred more and more to the airport project.
I understand.
I move to approve.
Uh, you know, the, the lighting needs to be redone.
Motion in the second to approve the design grant application for airport improvement project, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we're down to the approval of checks and registers.
Move to approve checks and registers as presented.
I'll second that, Chairman.
Motion in the second to approve checks and registers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this the second? Is this the second? Is this the second? Lucky was it? Lucky did?
Oh, is my squeaky boots? Sorry.
Are we going to executive session?
Executive session.
Yes, you can start.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss all of those items listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, Chairman.
Motion in the second to approve going to executive session, and pursuant to New Mexico State Statute of Section fifteen-one, the items listed on this agenda will be discussed. Executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.